Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with additional reference of business and may, as the Secretary General, be directed to read the title of the bill's resolution as well as communication and committee reports.
There any objection? There being none, motion is approved. Secretary General is requested to read the titles of the bills and resolutions and other communications for the respective referrals to the committees.
Additional reference of business builds on first reading. House Bill #9287 to strengthen the PRISA Act 1992.
Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill #9288 repealing the solicitation permit law by Representative Tambuntin.
Social Services.
House Bill #9289 providing a mechanism for free professional examinations by Representative Tambuntin.
Labor Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill #9290 to improve access on preschool, primary, and secondary education of homeless children and youth.
Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill #9291 granting additional leave for victims of domestic violence by Representative Tambuntin.
Women and Gender Inequality.
House Bill #9292 guaranteeing network neutrality to promote competition, encourage innovation, and protect internet consumers in the Philippines.
Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill #9293 establishing the Surigao City Special Economic Zone and Freeport by Representative Barbers.
Economic Affairs and Trade and Industry.
House Bill #9294 establishing a congressional library in Kindulman Bohol by Representative Totor.
Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill #9295 declaring Columbio Sultan Kudarat an eco-tourism zone by Representative Tambuntin.
Tourism.
House Bill #9296 renaming the Hobiliar National High School into the Don Jose Y Arcangel High School by Representative Cabrero.
Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill #9297 providing COVID-19 emergency rental assistance for affected micro-business owners by Representative C. Alvarado.
Micro, small, and medium enterprise development.
House Bill #9298 providing for an upgrade in the minimum wage of nurses and allied medical workers in all private hospitals and health institutions.
Labor and Employment.
House Bill #9299 providing for the employment of nurses, assigning at least one registered nurse for every unserved or underserved barangay in the Philippines by Representative Espino.
Local Government.
House Bill #9304 improving teacher quality, establishing a teacher education for achievers program by Representatives Villanueva, Eduardo, and Rivera.
Basic Education and Culture, Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill #9305 establishing the study now pay later program by Representatives Villanueva, Eduardo, and Rivera.
Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill #9309 criminalizing red tagging, providing penalties and sanctions by Representative Romero.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill #9310 granting a 12-month amortization plan for COVID-19 positive Filipinos who have incurred medical and hospitalization charges on private or public hospitals.
House Bill #9312 removing the expiration period of Joint Congressional Energy Commission.
Committee on Energy.
House Bill #9313 granting Manila Water Company Incorporated, the franchise to establish, operate, and run the waterworks.
House Bill #9314 providing for the conversion of Ehfo Goriseta Avenue.
Public Works and Highways.
International by Representative Goriseta.
House Bill #931 seeks to promote inclusive business to support and accelerate inclusive development at the national level.
Trade and Industry.
House Bill #9317 educating the public, senior citizens, their families, and their caregivers on identifying and preventing fraudulent activities.
Senior Citizens.
Representative Tambuntin.
House Bill #9318 providing free food for children in public schools and daycare centers.
Basic Education and Culture.
Products purchased by the government, Tambuntin.
House Bill #9319 requiring the mandatory labeling of household products containing hazardous substances.
Trade and Industry.
House Bill #9320 establishing and adopt a library program by Representative Tambuntin.
Basic Education.
House Bill #9321 establishing College of Medicine in President Ramon MacSystain, Secretary of Health.
Higher Education and Technical Education.
Representative Delos Montalha.
House Bill #9324 providing for relief package to the air transport sector through the Philippines by Representative Garin Sharon.
House Bill #9331 amending among other sections 3 and 4.
Public Works and Highways.
Right after it. Representative Sharon Garin.
House Bill #9332 amending Presidential Decree #114 regulating the establishment and expiration of pensions.
Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill #9333 appropriating the sum of 54 billion and 600 million pesos.
House Bill #9335 amending sections of the Act dividing between Munggad.
House Bill #9338 granting healthcare retirement and death benefits to professional sports athletes.
House Bill #9339 institutionalizing sustainability in government-funded sports facilities by Representative Tambuntin.
Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill #9340 mandating the appointment of one midwife.
Committee on Health.
House Bill #9341 establishing the Philippine Legislative Academy by Representative Tambuntin.
Labor Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill #9344 establishing separate schools division offices.
Basic Education and Culture.
Representative U.
House Bill #9349 increasing the rate of dividends to be declared in the Republican Enterprises.
Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Resolutions.
House Resolution 7175 to urging government financial institutions like the GIs.
Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Resolution 1753 urging the IITF and DOH to undertake house-to-house COVID-19.
House Resolution 1754 urging the Committee on Human Rights to investigate the fake mass surrender.
House Resolution 1755 urging the Committee on Human Rights to investigate a series of arrests.
House Resolution 1756 urging the Committee on Good Government.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1759 urging the Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the arrest of peasant leader.
House Resolution 1760 calling for the immediate convening of the Congressional Oversight Committee on Official Development.
Ways and Means.
House Resolution 1761 expressing the profound sympathies and serious condolences.
House Resolution 1762 urging the Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the death of peasant leader.
Message from the President.
Veto message dated March 26, 2021.
Committee on Rules.
Communications.
Letter and emails from certain municipal mayors and professional governors.
Appropriations.
Letters and emails from certain municipal and city mayors and official governors.
Letters dated March 12, 25, 26, and April 13 of the executive secretary.
The Archives.
Email dated March 16, 2021 of the President to the University of San Francisco.
Higher and Technical Education.
Letter dated March 18, 2021 of the RDC Vice Chair.
Economic Affairs.
Letter dated March 19, 2021, BSP Governor.
Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Email dated April 15, 2021 of NEA FST submitting.
Appropriations.
Letter dated April 15, 2021 of the PSG.
Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports. Report numbers 960 and 962 of the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Appropriations on House Bill numbers 586 and 9346. Report number 961, the Committees on Natural Resources and Appropriations on House Bill 9345. Report numbers 963 and 964 of the Committees.
The Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move, Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill #9007 as contained in Committee Report 873 submitted by the Committee on Trading Industry and Health. Mr. Speaker, I move, may, as the Secretary General, be directed to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Secretary General is requested to read the title of the bill.
House Bill #9007 and not regulating the manufacture, use, sale, packaging, distribution, advertisement, and promotion of electronic nicotine and non-nicotine delivery systems and heated tobacco products.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Trading Industry be recognize Honorable Sharon Garin.
There being no objection? The motion is approved. We are recognizing the sponsor, Honorable Sharon Garin, to begin the sponsorship of the said bill.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize Honorable Perde Gaita of Partilis Bayan Muna for his interpellation.
The Honorable Gaita is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my earlier motion to recognize Honorable Perde Gaita. Instead, we recognize Honorable Rosana Ria Bergara from the third district of Nueva Be西亚 for her interpellation.
The Honorable Ria Bergara is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for this opportunity to ask some clarificatory questions with the honorable author, my dear friend Chairman Garin.
Mr. Speaker.
He opened to some questions.
Mr. Speaker, with your kind indulgence, can I respectfully request Congressman Garbin, Pidok Garbin, to answer the questions of Congresswoman Bergara? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. The Honorable Garin is recognized.
May I proceed, Mr. Speaker?
The Honorable Garbin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Sponsor Congressman Garbin. I support the need to regulate the use and sale promotion of these electronic nicotine delivery systems, vaping devices, heated tobacco products. However, I would like to understand the reason for lowering the age from 21 to 18. And while I am fully aware that during the joint committee hearings of trade and industry together with health, the age of 18 was upheld by a majority vote because our laws currently allow cigarettes to be sold to individuals 18 years of age. Thus, 18 years was also recommended for these products. I'm not convinced that this is justification enough considering that this is a relatively new technology, as stated in most of the scientific studies, and even our resource speakers said that scientists are still studying and learning about the long-term health effects of these products on teenagers and users. Shouldn't we consider 21 as the age threshold as it provides stricter protections for our youth below 21? After all, the policy of the bill is to promote the right to health and instill health consciousness amongst our citizens. Again, Mr. Speaker, this is a relatively new technology, and the harms have yet to be adequately identified and addressed.
Mr. Speaker, I totally agree with Congresswoman Bergara that the youth should not use any tobacco or nicotine-containing product. We all know that nicotine is addictive and not risk-free. However, the law recognizes that the age of majority is 18 years of age. In fact, the Civil Code considers 18 as the age of emancipation. After someone turns 18, he or she is regarded as an adult who can first, he can vote, he can give consent for a major surgery, he can even sign a binding contract, and even join the Philippine Army. These are all associated with risk. Also, if you allow access to alcohol, which is equally harmful at the age of 18, yet you disallow access to alternative products like ends and HTPs, this really doesn't make sense, Mr. Speaker. So by the age of 18, Congresswoman Bergara, there are already many young smokers in the Philippines regardless of the law and the good intentions of the regulators. There's no reason to prevent them from switching to much safer products that substitute for the most harmful products. This regulations potentially allows another three years for a cigarette habit to become entrenched, Mr. Speaker. So when you speak of age of emancipation, under the law, the Civil Code, the Family Code speaks of 18 years of age.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Garin. What I'm proposing, while I agree with the facts that you stated, and they're well taken, I also believe that we should also consider those who are 18 who do not smoke and who might take up this habit of using this nicotine, this new delivery systems because they are available for people who are 18 years and above. Currently, our country has 109 million people, of which over 50% is below the age of 24. There's 19.16% between the ages of 15 to 24. So aren't we endangering these 18-year-olds who are not smoking, who would take up the habit, who are not smoking, yes, to take up the habit of vaping? I know, sir, you said that 18 is the age of maturity, they can vote, they can do other activities, but those activities you mentioned, while risky, do not result to addiction, which nicotine does, and that is my concern. How can we protect the 18-year-olds who are not smoking?
Well, there are enough regulations, and there are also products and standards that has to be observed and be enforced. But I truly commiserate with your concern, Congresswoman Bergara, Mr. Speaker. In fact, a lot of us here are parents, and we know that the solution is not really restrictions, but information and education. Because if we can allow 18-years-old to have a stake in our future or the future of this country, which is, you know, the right to vote, the right to enter into contract, then why abridge or raise the legal age of the HTPs and e-cigarettes to, say, 21 or 21 years of age? The reality is, if people want a product badly enough, they'll find a way to get it, whether it's legal or not. The new law will not absolutely and completely keep products out of the hands of the young teens, but by also over restricting these products, we are just making these products more appealing to the youth. So really, the solution is education and information we as parents to our children and to the youth.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I go now to my next question. In the bill, I noticed that it allows for different flavors. There are a wide variety of flavors that would made available under this proposed provision. It would be very enticing for minors and encourage them more to at least try or use them. I'm concerned that this may defeat the goal of preventing minors from using this product and endanger their health. May I ask the good author, what is the reason behind including these particular flavors as exceptions to the general provision, prohibition against flavored e-liquids? Would it be possible to further limit the allowable flavor similar to those used in cigarettes, tobacco, so that the health, especially of minors who may be enticed by these fun flavors, could be more protected?
Well, the use of flavors in smoke-free products is an important aspect to influence behavior change. We should recognize that if these better alternatives will not be palatable to smoker, then there will be no incentive for them to switch. We do agree that flavors which characterizing taste that are appealing to the youth, like candy or like, we'll say, tastes like bubble gum, should not be allowed. What we are trying to prohibit here is characterizing flavor. Now, the use of flavors in e-cigarettes and heated tobacco products play a very important role in enabling smokers who cannot quit smoking to switch to the said products. Among the key importance of using flavors are the following. First, it enables switching by smokers who cannot quit smoking. Second, flavors can help smokers overcome barriers, switch to less harmful smoke-free alternatives linked to different users' experience. Third, by creating a disassociation between cigarettes and smoke-free products, flavors can deter those who have switched to smoke-free products from going back to cigarettes. And the last, flavors should not be youth-oriented, targeted, not particularly attracted or attracted to youth.
But, Mr. Speaker, the flavors that we will be allowing should this bill pass would be plain fruit flavors, nuts, coffee, tea, vanilla, caramel, tobacco, menthol, and mint. So aren't those type of flavors enticing for the youth? Can't we just limit it, for instance, to tobacco, regular tobacco, and menthol, and just do away with the fruit flavors? There are no fruit-flavored cigarettes anyway.
Well, definitely, the bill contains no characterizations of flavors. What we are saying here is that we can ban on flavor description in the pack. It should not be marketed with the characterization of flavor, like when we say it tastes like bubble gum. So yunhu yung dapat ipagbawal. Pero to ban flavor per se would be disincentive for those smokers who wants to switch to those smoke-free, less harmful alternatives such as e-cigarettes and HTPs.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I concur that if we're using flavors to induce people who are smoking to switch, I don't think people who are smoking now would look for fruit flavors in order to switch. My concern is this fruit flavors is actually more inviting to non-smokers who don't like the taste of tobacco, who don't like the taste of cigarettes, and will use vaping because of the availability of the fruit flavors. In fact, Jules, the largest distributor of vaping devices in the United States, they saw that all these flavors were causing a whole new generation of teenagers and using these products, and so they've limited now their flavors to just Virginia tobacco, tobacco, and menthol. They pulled even mint because of the research results, and they stated, and I quote, "These results are unacceptable, and that is why we must reset the vapor category in the U.S. and earn the trust of society by working cooperatively with regulators and limiting the flavors. Attorney General, public health officials, and other stakeholders to combat underage use. Is the honorable sponsor willing to limit the amount of flavors so that there will be no plain fruit flavors, coffee, caramel, again, flavors which are enticing to the youth?"
As I have said, we totally, we both totally agree that we should not characterize flavors by displacing it in the pack. At the same time, let me say it again, that we should strike a balance between helping smokers quit and at the same time protecting the youth. A lot of adult smokers are switching because of the flavors. And if you think of cigarettes, there are no flavor restrictions for combustible cigarettes. So let me also give you the approaches adopted in other jurisdiction. Mr. Speaker, in the European Union, the EU Tobacco Products Directive provides that member states shall ban all cigarettes and roll own, roll your own tobacco with a characterizing flavor, but that all other tobacco products, namely Noble Tobacco Products, heated tobacco products, are exempted from this ban. This is from the EU. In Canada, Mrs. Speaker, there is no absolute ban on any flavors and e-cigarettes products, but promotions of flavored vaping products is prohibited, including through packaging if it is appealing to the youth. As I have said earlier, this bill will not characterize the flavor, Mr. Speaker.
Moving on, Mr. Speaker, would the honorable sponsor be amenable to amendments to Section 14, the bill, so that instead of just reading public place use, it will, it will be more specific and read use of ends, ends or HTP in public places, the use of ends, ends or HTP shall be prohibited in the following public places? In short, Mr. Speaker, Section 14 will be more, right now, it's very general. I would like to submit to the honorable author for his approval if he may, if he will agree to amendments to Section 14.
Well, those recommendations, Mr. Speaker, will be considered at the proper time when we reach the period of amendment. But let me just state, Mrs. Speaker, that Section 14, which speaks of the public place use, this should be retained as this aligns the public place rules with Republic Act 9211, in fact, also Executive Order 26 and 106. In the Republic Act 9211 and EO 26, it only prohibits smoking within enclosed public places except in designated smoking areas. In all other public places that are not enclosed, smoking is allowed. This is aligned with EO 106, which is also prohibits vaping in enclosed public places except in designated vaping areas. Now, let me also cite again another good practice in other jurisdiction. The Public Health England Guidelines on the Use of E-cigarette in Public Places and Workplaces concluded that international review. concluded that international reviewed evidence indicates that the risk to the health of the bystanders from exposures to e-cigarette before is extremely low. This is in contrast to the conclusive evidence of harm from exposure to the secondhand smoke. The evidence of harm from secondhand exposure to before is not sufficient to justify the prohibitions of e-cigarettes.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I, the amendment that I propose is in line with what the honorable sponsor says to make it, to harmonize it with RA 9211 or the Tobacco Regulation Act of 2003. Mr. Speaker, would the honorable author also be willing to include a new definition for public conveyances, as these are not in the section for definitions? Public conveyances read "refer to modes of transportation servicing the general populations, such as but not limited to elevators, airplanes, buses, taxicabs, ships, jeepneys, light rails, trams, tricycles, and similar vehicles." Following, I further propose that we also define what public places are in Section 3.
As I stated earlier, Mr. Speaker, with regard to the proposed amendment, we will deal with it at the proper time during the period of amendment. But as to public conveyance, as referred to as referred by Congresswoman Bergara, I think that will be dealt with. And I think this is acceptable, Mr. Speaker, but at the proper time during the period of amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to make my closing statement. Our current laws, Republic 811467, Amendments to the Tax Code enacted in January 2020, and Executive Order 106 signed last year, have pegged the minimum age sales of these products at 21 years old. To lower it to 18 years old, as provided in House Bill Number 907, is to my mind a step backward in our efforts to promote and protect the health of our people, most especially our youth. The lowering of the minimum age sales runs the risk of actually encouraging our youth, especially those barely out of their teenage years, to try such products with the belief that these are healthy and safer alternatives to cigarette smoking. In all the committee hearings that I attended wherein it was asked whether these products are safe, the answer was always yes, as compared to cigarettes, that is. Unfortunately, this qualified affirmation is not good enough for me. And until such time that comprehensive research is done and provides compelling evidence that these products are safe in and of themselves, I appeal to the honorable sponsor to reconsider raising the age to 21. Nicotine, in whatever form, is a danger to one's health. We all know this. It is addictive, harmful, and it is not safe, especially for our youth. As early as the 60s, it has already been widely asserted in the medical community that, and I quote, "the magnitude of the effect of cigarette smoking far outweighs all other factors." But around the same time, cigarette manufacturers knew that they were peddling a highly addictive product that was dangerous, and yet the prospect of profits weighed more. We must be wiser today and put the interests of our children before anything. We must do all that we can to protect our youth from the significant dangers that products such as non-combustible nicotine delivery systems may expose them to in the long term. Allowing these products be more easily accessible to them is a disservice to the Filipino youth. Thank you, Honorable Garin, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend for one minute.
Session suspended. And consideration of it. And move to resume consideration. Thanks, the Honorable Chair. Let's say it's resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill 9007, Committee Report Number 873.
There being no objection, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to begin consideration, the resolution of both houses, Number 2, as contained Committee Report Number 735. May I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Secretary General is requested to read the title of the bill, so mentioned.
Resolution of Both Houses, Number 2, Resolution of Both Houses Proposing Amendments to Certain Economic Provisions of the 1987 Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines, particularly on Articles 2, 14, and 16.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments be recognized, Honorable Alfredo A. Garbin Jr.
The Honorable Garbin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Lawrence Defensor from 30th District of Piluhilo for his interpellation.
The Honorable Lawrence Defensor is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the honorable sponsor and Chairman of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments yield to some questions from this representation?
Willingly, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the issue of whether we should meet or vote jointly or separately with the Senate has been repeatedly raised during the committee deliberations, as well as previous plenary debates. It has also been implied that if we were to adopt the joint voting theory, House, the House of Representatives, can proceed without the Senate in passing Resolution of Both Houses, Number 2. However, Mr. Speaker, RBH Number 2 expressly provides that we vote separately with the Senate. Will the sponsor agree with me that this issue should be resolved decisively during our plenary deliberations?
I agree, Mr. Speaker.
May I know from the sponsor, Mr. Speaker, can you tell us again what does Section 1, Article 17, provide in terms of amendments and revisions to the Constitution?
Well, Article 17, Section 1 of the 1987 Constitution provides that any amendment to or revision of this Constitution may be proposed by Congress upon a vote of three-fourths of all its members or constitutional convention.
Is it correct to say, Mr. Speaker, that the word "Congress" in Section 1 is capitalized, "Congress"? Will the sponsor agree with me?
Yes, the power to propose amendment to the Constitution belongs to Congress.
And the word "Congress," as provided in Section 1 of Article 6, what does Congress consist of based on a 1987 Constitution?
Congress as defined in Article 6 of the 1987 Constitution speaks of the House and the Senate.
And will the sponsor agree with me that both Congress and Senate have constituent power? Yes or no?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, when you speak of the exercise of constituent power, speaks of the House and in the Senate.
And does the Constitution say one cannot exercise constituent power without the other? Yes or no?
I agree, Mr. Speaker.
That's correct, Mr. Speaker. In fact, we both have constituent powers, inherent constituent powers. And as provided for by Article 17, it is the members of Congress who can exercise this constituent assembly. May I know, Mr. Sponsor, does the Constitution say that there should be a constituent assembly before any constituent power can be exercised by members of Congress? Yes or no?
Well, Mr. Speaker, under Article 17, it does not speak of constituent assembly. In fact, nowhere in Section 1 of Article 17 can you find the word "constituent assembly."
That's correct, Mr. Speaker. Will the sponsor recall during your law school days, if you ever took up the subject statutory construction?
Can you repeat the question, Mr. Speaker?
Does the sponsor recall ever taking up the subject in law school called statutory construction?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And by any chance, would you recall the meaning of the Latin maxim "hubi lex non distinguuit, nec nos distinguere debemos?"
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Speaker, it means if the law does not distinguish, we should not make a distinction.
That's correct. And does Article 17 of the 1987 Constitution distinguish what type of body or assembly could propose amendments thereto?
It does not.
That's correct. Mr. Sponsor, assuming that we approve our proposed amendments by a vote, by a three-fourth vote, three-fourths vote of all the members of the House of Representatives, and simply pass without the Senate as suggested, what would be the next step in order to implement the intention of Resolution of Both Houses, Number 2?
Well, under the Constitution, both houses of Congress is given the power to adopt its own rules to determine its own proceedings, including that of proposing amendment to the Constitution. Now, Mr. Speaker, whether to act as a two-separate body or as one body is for us to decide. Since this House decided to adopt a rule that when we are proposing amendment to the Constitution, we'll do it in a manner of proposing in an ordinary legislation, then we can act as a body independently of the Senate in proposing amendments to the Constitution.
Mr. Sponsor, will you agree with me that assuming arguendo, we pass this by a vote of three-fourths from the members of House of Representatives and without the Senate? Before a plebiscite can be held, we still need to pass a law authorizing such plebiscite in order for the proposed amendments to be voted upon by the Filipinos and approved the same?
Well, to answer the first question, Mr. Speaker, when you speak of Congress, as I have said earlier, it speaks of the House and in the Senate. And it is always my conviction that the three-fourths vote should be three-fourths of the Senate and three-fourths of the House of Representatives. Now, if we approve any proposal in amending the Constitution, it still need an enabling law to call for a plebiscite for deritification of the approved proposal of both houses of Congress. I agree, Mr. Speaker.
That's correct, Mr. Sponsor. So, even if we adopt the joint voting, the the joint voting theory and simply override the 24 senators by voting upon Resolution of Both Houses, Number 2, on our own, we still cannot proceed because we still need to pass a law authorizing a plebiscite, and it needs a counterpart bill in the Senate also to authorize the plebiscite. Is that correct? Yes or no?
Totally agree, Mr. Speaker, that is a nature away by camera Congress.
So, it is clear, Mr. Speaker, that based on Resolution of Both Houses, Number 2, voting separately would be the proper course of action to pass the proposed amendments in accordance with the 1987 Constitution and with its intentions. And, Mr. Sponsor, will you agree with me that in deliberating Resolution of Both Houses, Number 2, we still need the Senate as part of a number two, we still need the Senate as part of a bicameral body of Congress as provided under the 1987 Constitution?
I agree, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I have no further questions, but may I request, if the Sponsor will allow, that I be given the opportunity to propose amendments to resolution of both houses, number two, with respect to where the phrase unless otherwise provided by law should be placed in resolution of both houses, number two, during the period of amendments?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, at the proper time.
Mr. Speaker, I have no more questions. May I thank the Sponsor and the Chairman of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend consideration to RBH two.
Objection. Hearing done. The motion is approved. Session is suspended. Sorry, sorry. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to begin consideration to House Bill Number 9007, as contained in committee report number 873, submitted by the Committee on Trade, Industry, and Health. Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Garbin.
The Honorable Alfredo Garbin is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Representative Pardigaita.
Honorable Gaite is recognized.
No, 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 Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Jose Enrique Jowett as Garcia, the third of Second District of Batan, for his interpolation.
Chair recognizes the Honorable Jowett Garcia for his interpolation.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a few minutes suspension.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a few minutes suspension again.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I reiterate my motion. I move that we recognize Representative Jose Enrique Jowett as Garcia, the third of Second District of Batan, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Jowett Garcia of Batan is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Naririnig ko ba ako?
Yes, Honorable Garcia.
Maraming salamat po sa pagkakataon para po makapagtanong tungkol sa ating panukala. Unang-unang po pwede natin matanong 'yung Sponsor at pagpasensya niyo na baka natanong na rin to kanina. Pero ano po 'yung pinaka-objective ng ating panukalang ito para sa e-cigarettes?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The objective of the bill is to regulate these new products, new forms of smoking. In fact, we don't call it smoking because it does not produce tar. The objective is the products are already in the market, and some of our constituents, as well as the rest of the world, they are already using such products. And hence, if we let it be and we don't regulate, we will, we are at risk of what happened in the U.S. a few years back on the accidents that happened on electronic cigarettes will happen to us. So that is why we need to empower agencies to be able to regulate in whichever stage it might be. It might be manufacturing, it can be the promotions, it can be the retail. So what we need is to make sure that these products are regulated so that our children as well as our smokers are in safe hands, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat po. So idig sabihin, itong regulasyon na'to ay para sa, unang-unang sa maprotektahan ang ating mga kabataan na natural ayaw nating ma-initiate o ayaw natin makapagsimula nung kinatawag nating nicotine addiction. At pangalawa, as an alternative sa regular na sigarilyo, itong e-cigarettes, ang isang alternatiba na ayon sa ibang pag-aaral ay maaring, kinatawag nating, less harmful. Tama po ba yun, Mr. Speaker?
Um, Mr. Speaker, yes, right. One of the purpose of the bill is to regulate, as well as regulate a product that is actually less harmful than cigarettes. It is not harmless, but it is less harmful. But in order to make sure that they are less harmful, we need to regulate such products. If I understood correctly your question, Mr. Speaker, because the audio is quite, medyo may konting echo lang, Mr. Speaker.
Tama po. Pasensya na po, medyo mahina rin talaga 'yung audio at saka internet connection kung nasana ko, Mr. Speaker. Pero going, sa pangalawa ko kung katanungan, and my second question, if we all remember, I believe this was 2019, the President was very vocal about his position on e-cigarettes. And if I may, in a November 2019 press briefing, I quote the President, "Mabuti pa ang sigarilyo kasi the confirmed toxic thing that causes harm to people nakalagay dyan, 'yung nicotine. Itong vaping, it contains nicotine and other chemicals that we do not know. It has not passed the FDA, Food and Drugs." And at the same time, I said, "Smoking is dangerous, so vaping is also dangerous," and I am banning it. So ito po 'yung mga unang salita ni Presidente Duterte, although we all know, no? In the end, hindi naman po niya, hindi naman tayo nagkaroon ng total ban, pero hindi nag-issue po siya nung Executive Order 106. Mr. Speaker, aware po ba 'yung Sponsor natin sa Executive Order 106?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, Congressman Garcia is correct that with regards to the statements of the President. That is why exactly we need regulation, because first of all, meron na tayong benta at nagbebenta at nagkoconsume dito sa Pilipinas, and we do not have a clear and effective law and regulation, including, which is the most important, I think, is the product standards na dapat ifollow, kasi kung substandard yan, then exactly what the President said, that will endanger the health, not only on nicotine or tar, no? It will endanger them in the other ingredients that, or mechanisms that they use for, for the HTPs. And the next would be to, in order for us to make sure that what they say this is reduced harm, no? That's why it has to go through a process. Kaya kailangan talaga 'yung regulation eh, kasi we cannot, the intention is good of these products, that there will be less tar in smoking or vaping, pero if we don't, if let them sell whatever we get from whichever country or whatever we produce from whichever manufacturing, manufacturer, then without regulation, we are risk, it is risky. And the President is correct in that. That hands the need for this law, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, thank you for that answer, Mr. Speaker, Chair Garin. Can I know also, since after those statements, the President issued Executive Order 106, may I know the difference, the main differences of Executive Order 106 with this proposed measure?
This proposed measure, start with, Mr. Speaker, we have started regulating these products with NIRC. The last time that we have made an amendment in the NIRC on the, on the syntaxes, we have actually included regulatory measures there. But that was, at that moment was conditional, and it can be considered as a rider. So what we have done, what we have done is actually make a regulatory law in order to address, address the concerns of all the stakeholders as well as the consumer groups. Ang, um, and, and we are in line also, no, with the interest of, kung ano 'yung, what we have done is collate all the ideas from our local experts, international experts, and all the other agencies that we have talked to. So we have formulated this. This is in response, just to be transparent about this, we have made, this is in response to what we have done with NIRC, which I think is not the correct place to put the regulation. So ang main difference naman ng, ang main difference sa issuance ng President was the age and regulatory body. I think the age at that time was a bit higher than 18. Today, we are proposing 18 years old, and the regulatory body now is the Department of Trade, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, so number one, 'yung age, kung tama po 'yung pakakaalam ko, ang age sa Executive Order 106, and also in a previous law that Congress has passed, ang age that will allow vaping or e-cigarettes is age 21. But in our proposed measure, the age is only 18. So binaba po natin sa 18 years old. And then second, tama po, instead of FDA, which is very clear, dun po sa EO 106, dito sa ating panukala, nilipat natin sa DTI at hindi na sa FDA ang magiging main government officer agency that will handle its regulation. And kung tama rin po naalala ko, Mr. Speaker, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chair Garin, 'yung flavors, I believe EO 106 does not allow flavors, but in our bill, in the, in the proposed measure... but in our bill, in the proposed measure, flavors, different flavors are allowed. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, um, yes, Mr. Speaker. I... there were three points there that was pointed by Congressman Garcia, the flavors, the age, and the FDA. To start with the age, the regular tobacco, we allow 18 years old to consume or purchase tobacco. But the direction of this bill, the direction of this bill is actually recognizing that these products may not be harmless, but it is less harmful. So if we put the age at 21 while regular tobacco is at 18, this is contradictory to what the intention of the bill is. Because gusto nating i-encourage sila to let go of the regular tobacco, which is more dangerous. Pero at the same time, we are more stringent with what is probably safer. So hence, the consensus of the committee was to put it at 18 years old. Kasi you can enter into a contract, you can buy alcohol, you can get the driver's license, you can do so many things, get married at 18, but you cannot... It's not a good signal if you only allow them to buy heated tobacco products at 21. Now with the flavors, the flavors, I agree with Congressman Joet Garcia that this might, in a sense, that it might encourage consumption by minors or those that are younger, or encourage non-smokers to smoke, no? But reading from the findings of scientists all over the world, flavors actually is not the problem, it is the marketing side. Hindi po nainggan 'yung bata dahil may flavor ka dyan na kakaiba. It is more of the way you package your flavors. So that's why, in response, this bill is proposing safeguards on how you package your products and how you market it. Even penalties on any violations of this. So dyan po 'yung... the key to controlling this is more on the safeguards rather than controlling the flavors. But we have restricted the flavors to certain flavors lang. We have enumerated it in the bill. Wala pong mga bubble gum or any kind of that flavor. But we have restricted it to fruit flavors, vanilla, little more boring for younger kids. And then the FDA, since this is not a food nor a drug, there are no health claims on this. This should be considered as a consumer product. Hence, it is rightfully under the jurisdiction of the Department of Trade and Industry. But we have included that it will be in coordination with FDA and NTA also, Mr. Speaker.
Um, Mr. Speaker, kung the reason why we brought it back, because we have an existing law that for ENS, it will be 21. If the reason why we're bringing it back to 18 is because cigarettes are allowed for 18 years old and above. Hindi po ba mas maganda na ipattern na natin ito sa EO 106 at saka sa existing law that we have na 21 years old? And amend RA 9211, which is the Tobacco Regulation Act, to make it also 21? Uh, Mr. Speaker, Tobacco Regulation Act was started in 2003, if I'm not mistaken. Hanggang ngayon, libo-libo pa rin daanglibo pa rin po ng Pilipino ang nagkakasakit at namamatay ng dahil sa sigarilyo. So I think it's about time that we further protect our people, both the youth and the adults, from both cigarettes and also this new products that we call ENS. Hindi po ba mas maganda, imbes na ibababa natin ulit, kasi may batas na tayo ngayon na 21 years old dapat lang ang makakabili ng e-cigarettes, hindi po ba mas maganda? Na agree ako na dapat siguro pantay, no? Walang discrimination. Hindi kayang-kaya po natin, Mr. Speaker, amend, 'yung Tobacco Regulation Act para 21 years old na rin ang pwedeng manigarilyo. That way, protektado natin 'yung mga kabataan. Tapos hopefully, since 21 years old lang pwedeng makabili ng sigarilyo, hopefully, 'yung pag-initiate ng kabataan sa sigarilyo ay medyo mas tumagal din, no? Hindi 'yung 18 years old pa lang pwede na silang manigarilyo. Hindi po ba, especially talking about public health, hindi po ba mas maganda na iakyat na rin natin to 21? Ang sigarilyo total meron ang batas at na sa EO 106 na 21 years old ang sa ENS or sa e-cigarettes?
Yes. If we increase the age restriction to 21 on regular tobacco, then we can adjust the proposal to 21 also. But pending that, and that might happen next month or next year or in five years, the committee sees it as a wrong signal if we have a law for a product that is less harmful to have a more restrictive conditions than a product that is... has been causing our country so much grief in terms of public health expenditure. So we can address, we can do that together, Congressman Garcia. Do the amendments together of both bills or both laws. But while that is pending, I would tend to disagree na unahin muna to because that is not a good signal to what kind of product this is, Mr. Speaker.
Um, Mr. Speaker, actually, it's the other way around. Uh, we are now lowering the age because by law, both again EO 106 and... Sorry, I forgot the RA of the existing law, that revenue measure that includes ENS. Nakalagay na po doon na 21 years old. So actually, sa ngayon, 21 years old talaga ang ENS. So it's a matter of getting the commitment of the Committee on Trade and Industry and also the commitment on the Committee on Health. I also have a pending measure on the amendment to 9211. So pwede po natin na ihabol naman, Mr. Speaker, even this Congress, ito pong amendment sa 9211, all for the sake of public health.
Um, yes, Mr. Speaker. Tobacco, combustible tobacco is at 18 years old. So in line with the intention of this bill, the authors, as well as the members of the committee, are in line with the fact that these products are less harmful. So regardless of whatever law is existing or whatever issuance is existing, based on the intentions of the authors and the committee, it is... we are maintaining it at 18. Kasi parang, if you compare it on a bigger picture, not just about any EO regulating the same product, but also you relate it to tobacco, combustible tobacco, which is the evilist... the most evil among the products, then we should be equivalent at least, or more lenient to the restrictions compared to tobacco. Mr. Speaker?
No, sir. Yeah, Mr. Speaker. So again, what we are doing, and I want to put this on record, is we are reversing an existing law that allows ENS for 21 years old and above and also the issuance, the executive order of the President that allows ENS for 21. So we are, in fact, reversing that. By passing this measure, we are reversing that. Instead of 21, binabalik po natin sa 18 years old. So I just want to make that clear, Mr. Speaker. And secondly, even 'yung claim ng e-cigarette companies, even the studies, no one says that these claims, that it is less dangerous because there's no combustion. These are safer. Right now, maaring may study na lumalabas na safer, pero diba napakinggan natin, napanood natin sa telebisyon noong 2019, hindi ako nagkakamali, kung gaano karami 'yung mga teenagers na nagkasakit na ospital ng dahil sa ENS or dahil sa vapes sa Amerika at sigurado sa ibat-ibang bansa. So it may have less combustion or no combustion. But again, because this is a novel product, bago po ito, hindi pa rin natin conclusively masasabi na ito ay safe or even safer. Again, there are some studies that claim that, but since it's a novel product, it will take time before we conclusively state that it is safer. Kaya po, ako hindi ako naniniwala na dapat po nating gamiting yun na dahilan para ibaba 'yung age at saka sabihin na merong safer ito, kaya dapat mas less strict tayo dito. Pagdating naman po sa flavors, again, Mr. Speaker, hopefully, I will be proposing amendments after my interpolation, if the committee, if the plenary will accept it, if the committee will accept it. Na altogether, tanggalin na po natin 'yung mga flavors. Kasi anyway, Chair Garin, our sponsor, mentioned earlier na isa rin talaga sa concern natin is 'yung proteksyon ng ating mga kabataan, 'yung youth. So wag na tayong magtipid pa. Pagdating sa mga provision na mga regulasyon, wag na natin tipi rin pa kung ano 'yung tingin natin na mas makakabuti, lalo na sa kabataan. Dahil we have records, we have data to show na talagang pwede pong mainishate ang kabataan dahil dito sa ENS, no? Dahil bagong produkto ito, very attractive. Kina-kailangan talaga mauna 'yung public health, kina-kailangan talaga mauna 'yung proteksyon natin sa kanila. Then promoting, no? Any industry that we have. And then lastly, Mr. Speaker, 'yung with regards to sa FDA, I think in most countries, I don't know, baka Chair Garin would have data. I think in most countries, products such as ENS, cigarettes, these are all under FDA. Kasi in fact, 'yung main content niya, which is nicotine, diba kasama po yan, no? Kasama po yan sa kinategorize ng FDA na na coisunus, no? Na toxic substance. So it's very unusual that a product that contains a toxic substance will be under another agency and not to the agency that will know how toxic that particular product is. Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the smoking, smoking, the component of smoking that is... Question usually is the combustion. Mr. Speaker, there are numerous studies, scientific studies, proving that tobacco, combustible tobacco, is dangerous to our health. Now, we don't have the same studies with HTPs or ENS because this is a new product, probably about 10 years. But it is proven fact that combustible tobacco is dangerous to public health or individual health. But, Mr. Speaker, it is also a proven fact that it is not the nicotine that kills. It is the combustion or the tar that kills the consumer. As they say, people smoke because they want nicotine, but they die because of tar. So kung 'yung product na'to, eh walang tar, walang combustion, then it is 95% of that, of the dangerous elements that you find in combustible tobacco, is not found in these products. Mr. Speaker, that is why we are pushing for the regulation of these products. Kasi po, kaya nga nangyari yun sa US and probably happening here also. For the lack of regulation, we are having accidents for these products. It is also with a point of why DTI, Mr. Speaker? Kasi wala naman tong health claims. We all agreed na walang health claims dito. If you don't have any health claims, then it's not under Food and Drug Administration. It is a consumer product, which is under DTI. And I would not question the capacity of DTI because it has mechanisms, as well as experts, that can test the products, as well as set the standards, which is in part of any international regulation, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, just an example, and this is a clear example on why DTI shouldn't be the lead agency here. Sa Tobacco Regulation Act, meron po tayong I Act. Ito po 'yung committee that is in charge of making sure that we implement the law properly, which is protection from cigarette smoking. Ang lead agency po doon, ang lead agency po doon ay ang DTI. And during the many committee hearings that we've had sa joint committee meetings with Trade and Health, lumalabas, Mr. Speaker, the past several years, from 2003 until 2020 or 2019, 'yung sinabi nilang data, there were very few or little meetings that the I Act made for this very important measure, which is protecting our people from cigarette smoke. So binuinyo, 17 years, and yet, 'yung minutes of meeting ng I Act, sila po 'yung nasa batas nakalagay, na sigurduhin ang implementasyon ng batas and headed by DTI. 'Yung minutes noong meeting, siguro ilang pages lang po, Mr. Speaker. So dun, kaya dunoo ako worried the worried. Because DTI is not a health agency. I believe this should be a health measure. We all know its harms. Sinabi na rin po ng ating sponsor na harmful itong produkto neto. So it has to be the Department of Health, and FDA is under the Department of Health. And, Mr. Speaker, I heard earlier, this is a consumer product, wala namang health claims. Pero may I know from our sponsor, dun sa declaration of policy, nakalagay na ito ay isang harm reduction measure. So if we are declaring that this is a harm reduction measure in the bill itself, in the eventually, a law, sinasabi natin, this is a harm reduction measure, hindi po ba health claim yun, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, with your kind indulgence, Mr. Speaker, I would like to refer the question of Congressman Joet Garcia to the former chairman of the TWG, as well as the committee, to Deputy Speaker Wes Kachalian.
Mr. Speaker, being the former chairman of the Committee on Trade and Industry and presently the deputy speaker for Trade and Industry, may I be allowed to answer the queries of the good gentleman from Bataan, please?
Go ahead.
I also prepared just a few slides while I'm explaining the same issue and to answer the query of Honorable Garcia. First of all, tatlo po ang rason kung bakit po natin kailangan ilagay itong produkto neto sa DTI, no? Unang-unang po, ang produkto neto, we understand it contains medicinal or chemicals inside the apparatus, but overall ho, ang technology neto ay bago pa lang at overall ho, ang technology ho natin ay ang main component po neto ay ang equipment na ginagamit ho natin. So I believe, Mr. Speaker, that this ENS or HTP should be under the consumer protection, consumer products, under DTI. Unang-unang po, I believe the capability of DTI ho, DTI has balanced and more wide technical expertise, being the head of various agencies under it, no? Andyan na pong intellectual property, andyan po ang Bureau of Import Services, andyan po ang Bureau of Philippine Standards, andyan din po ang Consumer Protection Group, no? Bakit ho importante ito? Dahil ho, ang pinag-uusapan ho natin ho dito ay hindi lamang ho ang health aspect of this product. Kung hindi ho pinag-uusapan natin, this is... Kung hindi ho pinag-uusapan natin, this is a multi-facet issues na kasama na ho dyan ang product standards, taxes, the prices, intellectual property, illicit trade, importation, et cetera, no? Pangalawa po, ang gaya po na nasabi po ni Congresswoman Garin, ang manpower po ng DTI, ours is bigger compared to FDA, no? So in a way, ito pong panokalan natin, pag ito po'y naging batas, I would likely be able to police and regulate the whole industry. The DTI likewise, ho, I posted here, meets at least six international recognized standards. So compare po sa FDA, makikitahu natin na aside from ISO, aside from AFNOR, aside from TUV from Germany, these are all international recognized standards na capable po ang Department of Trade and Industries. Pangalawa po, Mr. Speaker, under RA 9211 or the Tobacco Regulation Act, DTI is already the lead in the Interagency Committee on Tobacco. So ito pong RA 9211 ay ipinasap po, ay taging batas po nung 2001. Kaya ho, ayaw na ho natin palitan pa, no? 2001 pa lang, lead agency na po ang DTI, at icontinue na rin ho natin sila, hopefully through this regulation. And furthermore, the cigarette is already regulated as a consumer product under RA 9211. So hindi na ho natin sana, kailangan palitan pa, at ito po ay maging under pa rin sa DTI natin. The third reason, Mr. Speaker, is the international practice, no? In other countries, there are 41 countries in the world, according to the World Health Organization, that treats this NTS and HTP and these products as consumer products as compared to almost 30 countries that treats this as medicinal product. 72 countries has lost regulating these products. And in the UK, Mr. Speaker, UK, US, Canada, New Zealand, sila po ay they're using it as a dual-track product. It means, dual-track means that this product is under a consumer product. Pero kung ito po'y merong therapeutic claim, o magkakaroon po ng therapeutic claim, doon lang pumapasok po na maging under ng FDA. So, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much for allowing me to speak in behalf of the Committee on Trade and Industry.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much, DS Wes. Marami salamat po sa presentation. Pero again, I'd like to emphasize that DTI, as head of the committee in RA 9211, again, both in terms of smoking prevalence and also compliance when it comes to regular meetings of the IAAC, they have failed miserably. That is on record in our committee meetings. At hindi ho nila nagawa 'yung kanilang trabaho. That's why this representation, together with all our health advocates, are very worried na sila rin po 'yung mangangasiwa ng NTS, 'yung pagdating sa regulation ng NTS. And then pangalawa po, Mr. Speaker, again, meron tayong that, under declaration of policy, nilagay po natin na this is a harm reduction measure. So are we claiming that there are health benefits or by saying that it is a harm reduction measure and you're offering it as an alternative to cigarette smoking? So I believe, Mr. Speaker, may claim tayo na, and we want it in the law, kasi nakasulat po 'yan sa provision, na it is a harm reduction measure as part of the declaration of policy. May I know, Mr. Speaker, ano po 'yung comment ng DOH about this during the committee meetings?
So, Mr. Speaker, harm reduction defines, dito po sa study na ginawa po ng Australian government, harm reduction is a philosophy that focuses on preventing or reducing the harm associated with potentially risky activities, not on preventing people from performing those activities. But, Mr. Speaker, babalik lang ho ako sa unang katanungan ng ating good gentleman from Bataan, Congressman Garcia. I believe as legislators po, it is not our job to give a report card kung sino pong government agencies ang magaling at hindi magaling, effective at hindi effective po, no? Sa atin lang, dito pa lang ho, lagay na lang po natin, sa sitwasyon natin sa pandemya, kitang-kita na natin, Mr. Speaker, ang failure ng FDA, no? Sa pag-roll out ng vaccine, sa pag-release po on time ng branded vaccines natin, pag sa issue po na ivermectin, na pinag-uusapan po dito sa Kongreso, at sa maraming bagay po, nakita ho natin naman kung gaano kabagal din po ang FDA at gaano po ka-inefficient ang ahensya ng FDA. So with your respect to DOH and FDA, I just, being the former chairman of this committee, Trade and Industry, kaya ho, naging lead committee. Ang Committee on Trade and Industry dito sa bagay neto ay dahil we believe that this should be treated as a consumer product. We should look at it on an overall aspect po, dahil ito po'y new innovation. 10 years pa lang tong innovation na to, wala pa masyadong nakakaalam sa Pilipinas, maging sa ibang mundo po, tuloy-tuloy pa rin po ang pag-aaral nila at pagsusuri at ang RND ho nila. Ngunit sa ibang bansa, nakikita ho natin na majority sa kanila treats this product as consumer product. And this is the reason why I believe that it should be under the Department of Trade and Industry. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, again, would you respect to DTI? This law, Republic Act 9211, was passed in 2003, so it's been more than 17 years. Compare ho siguro sa naging example po ni aking Deputy Speaker Wes, FDA, pandemic, bago po lahat tong pandemic, lahat ho tayo nangangapa. But this tobacco regulation, which DTI is supposed to lead, and antas pa rin po ng smoking prevalence natin. For the past 17 years, every year, almost 100,000 Filipinos die because of smoking. Yun po ay isang malaking, mabigat na datos na nagpapakita na dapat talaga maging mas nahigit pa tayo, o tignan natin talaga kung anong paraan para maiwasan ang pagkamatay ng mga Pilipino ng dahil po sa sigarilyo. So we're talking about 17 years, we're talking about a product that has been here for, I don't know, more than 50 years. We're not talking about a new virus, we're not talking about just the past year. We could have made all the adjustments if we were really serious in lowering our smoking prevalence. And then, Mr. Speaker, nabanggit nga ako, no? This is a new product precisely, although there are many countries that have accepted it, whether as a consumer or as a health or medicinal product, but there are still, I think around 30 countries, that have banned the product precisely because, like what our president said, hindi natin alam kung ano 'yung laman nito. Hindi po natin alam kung ano 'yung epekto nito sa ating mga mamayan, hindi natin alam kung ano 'yung laman ng bawat isig or vape na binibenta. Kaya po, kinakailangan mas mag-ingat po tayo. Take for example, Mr. Speaker, Singapore. Singapore has one of the lowest smoking prevalence in the world. I believe it's at 12%. And yet, Singapore choose to ban it because siguro nakita po nila, Mr. Speaker, paunti-unti na po silang nananalo sa laban, dito ho sa paninigarilyo, laban ho sa tobacco, laban sa nicotine addiction, and po mag-iintroduce sila ng isang produkto na pwede pong lalo pang ma-addict 'yung kanila pong mga kabayan, lalo na mga kabataan, sa nicotine. Hindi ba parang ire-reverse nila din 'yung gains that they were able to do with their smoking regulation law, with their health promotion law, the past several years? So yun po 'yung reason, kaya mas pro-health po 'yung approach ng Singapore tungkol dito, kasi they are at least gaining, no? Pagdating po sa paninigarilyo, laban sa paninigarilyo, and they don't want any new product that will reverse those gains. And at the same time, Mr. Speaker, pagdating ho muli sa FDA, again, we are reversing what is already in Executive Order 106. Sa Executive Order 106 po, nakalagay na doon, piniramahan po 'yan ni presidente, na FDA, ang mangangasiwa pagdating po sa e-cigarettes. So with this bill, we are in fact reversing it. So yun po, siguro dapat malinaw sa lahat po sa atin, Mr. Speaker. And then, again, we're talking about safety. May I ask, Mr. Speaker, what are the contents of NTS? Ano po ba ang mga kemikal, bukod sa nicotine? Ano po ba 'yung kasama dito sa NTS?
Mr. Speaker, the current, the different, for example, Mr. Speaker, as cited by Congressman Garcia before, there are countries that did ban e-cigarettes and the effect of that is that their consumption, smoking level in their respective countries have not changed actually. While in other countries that have adopted a similar course that we are doing now, there has been significant changes, especially like Japan or United Kingdom, in which there was a decrease in the consumption of combustible tobacco in line with the increase also in the consumption of electronic heated tobacco products. So we have to look at it in a bigger picture, Mr. Speaker. But what we do believe, if we wanna go technical, there are about 70, let's say, elements that are dangerous in combustible tobacco. And out of that 70 elements, 95% of that is eliminated because of the lack of combustion. So it is actually the tar, this has been, I don't think anybody can dispute na 'yung tar talaga 'yung danger sa tobacco. So if we eliminate that and we give our people the chance to consume this instead of the dangerous combustible tobacco, then why should we deprive them of this? Of course, there are limitations because we need to make sure that kahit gayon 'yung sa sabihin natin, na eto, there are less dangers here, but we need to make sure that these are safe. And hence, we need the regulation through the Department of Trade and Industry, Mr. Speaker. I'm not sure if I answered your question, Congressman Joette.
I agree, Mr. Speaker, that tar is dangerous. But again, because of the many chemicals, nicotine that is in NTS, this product is also, as you said, harmful. And in fact, in many news stories and articles, marami pong severe injuries, especially sa lungs, because of using these products. And we cannot afford that, Mr. Speaker, now that we are in this pandemic, to further weaken the lungs of our people, especially our youth. And then, Mr. Speaker, malinaw din po bilanggit during our committee meetings that nicotine slows down, slows down or affects the development of the human brain, especially for those below 25 years old. Yun din po, Mr. Speaker, 'yung dahilan kung bakit gusto po natin sana itaas 'yung minimum age for NTS. Mr. Speaker, may I ask our sponsor, what are our safeguards against youth initiation? In the law, in the bill, ano po 'yung mga safeguards natin against youth initiation?
Mr. Speaker, nicotine is actually, well, it is not an entirely benign substance. It is not directly responsible for the cancer or lung disease. It is actually the tar, Mr. Speaker. But just not to belabor the point, Mr. Speaker, for us to limit, for us to have safeguards on consumption of youth, primarily there is the safeguards on marketing and packaging, Mr. Speaker. We should not allow them, same way as we do in cigarettes, no? We should not allow these manufacturers or distributors to make it attractive to the youth, 'yung packaging. Kasi marami pong mga packaging sa US, for example, before their regulation, may mga karikature pa, may, they had colorful packaging which attracted the youth. Now, it is in the proposal, 'yung packaging restrictions natin. And then also, we have also the regulation, the product standards that we have imposed that will be carried out by the Department of Trade and Industry. Para 'yung product standards will be based on our own findings, and also based on the findings internationally. Para at least merong nagbabantay ng quality, that you cannot sell substandard products that will endanger, baka hindi naman sa nicotine ma-endanger 'yung mga bata, kung di baka sa the dangerous devices that they sell. So that those are probably the basic, the most basic safeguards that we have put in terms of that issue, Mr. Speaker.
Um, Mr. Speaker, baka ho kulang siguro, no? 'Yung ating mga safeguards against youth initiation. Again, I'd like to go back, dun sa flavors, and then sa minimum age of 21, malaking bagay po yun, Mr. Speaker, kun tatanggapin ng ating committee. Ito pong amendment, proposed amendment po natin to make it 21 years old, minimum age, and then to not allow the use of flavors. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Speaker, dun sa ating committee meetings, even the manufacturers themselves has no, they have no objection if we will remove the flavors. I was also, I was the co-chair of the Technical Working Group. I remember clearly that our manufacturers, wala pong objection kung aalisin natin 'yung flavors, kung ano 'yung ipapasa natin batas, kung walang flavors 'yan, okay lang ho sa mga manufacturers. Mr. Speaker, may I also ask our sponsor, are we aware of the problem of vaping and e-cigarettes in our schools with the youth?
Mr. Speaker, vaping within the premises of the schools, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, yes, both, both vaping within schools, but more so, Mr. Speaker, 'yung bilang, 'yung dami ng mga kabataan natin na gumagamit na ng e-cigarettes.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, in the same way that we are aware that there's drinking and combustible smoking as well in the schools, Mr. Speaker. There's a matter of implementation as well as if should all our agencies as well as our government officials be able to implement the laws, then I don't think it is a question of legislation, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I was asking that question because many schools have approached me, asking me to, in fact, to talk to their students with regards to using vapes or NTS. So it's a problem, current problem with our schools. Marami po ang gumagamit ng vape dahil nga walang usok. So kahit nandun sila sa classroom, pag hindi nakatingin 'yung teacher, pag lumabas po 'yung teacher, ay nagva-vape po sila, within the classroom. So tapos, most of them, medyo odorless, wala pong amoy, kaya nagagamit po nila. And then number two, alam naman po natin, Mr. Speaker, kung ano itsura, ito pong mga vapes, very high-tech. So they get attracted to these devices, diba mukha po siyang USB drive, mukha po siyang gadget, kaya po marami sa kanilang sumusubok talaga para mag-vape, para po mag-e-cigarette, regardless whether they're in their schools or whether they're in their homes or outside. So that's why, Mr. Speaker, talaga pong napakahalaga, now, we need to be more creative, we need to anticipate, given that there is already, there are already problems with the youth using this product that they're not supposed to use. We need to really introduce in the bill, measures, safeguards that will protect them from initiation and from being nicotine addicts. Then, Mr. Speaker, may I ask also our sponsor, how will this measure, this bill be implemented? So if DTI is the lead agency, how will the enforcement be all over the Philippines? so if DTI is the lead agency how will the enforcement be all over the Philippines?
To start with Mr. Speaker e-cigarettes are because of this in the current proposal e-cigarettes and all the ehants products are prohibited in schools it's a matter of implementation and it will depend on how the agencies will implement such now in terms of implementation we are mandating the Department of Trade and Industry to to check all equipments and all the ingredients that are in the products so the product standards will be set by the Department of Trade and Industry kaya the head the lead the lead to this would be the Department of Trade and Industry because being it being a consumer product trade talaga 'yung main agency dito Mr. Speaker and if there's a need for any support from our uniform personnel then that goes without saying even if you don't have it in the bill Mr. Speaker
Mr. Speaker when it comes to schools first no sa Tobacco Regulation Act and I believe also in our in this measure ilang meters po away from the schools dapat 'yung pagbebenta ng ehants?
One hundred meters Mr. Speaker 'yung to sell?
Yes
To consume you cannot within the school but to sell you have to be at least one hundred meters
So one hundred meters Mr. Speaker alam po ba ng sponsor natin gaano po kalayo 'yung one hundred meters?
One tenth of a kilometer
One tenth of a kilometer or tama ba Mr. Speaker at three hundred around three hundred feet tama po ba 'yun?
It won't be I guess it would be like as long as this plenary hall Mr. Speaker
Okay so as long as this plenary hall um diyan po ba sa plenary hall natin Mr. Speaker? Nakikita po ba natin 'yung dulo ng plenary hall if I stand on the farthest side will I see the other side?
If there's no obstruction I would say so depends on the size of the
Tama po Mr. Speaker 'yung one hundred meters 'yung one hundred meters po meron pong tinatawag natin line of sight ibig sabihin hundred meters is very near in fact near enough for me to see and for me to recognize a person or even maybe to recognize what products are being sold so Mr. Speaker 'yung isa ko pong point dito together with this is also amendment sa Tobacco Regulation Act one hundred meters has no basis at all napakalapit po nun parang ang naging compliance lang siya na masabi lang na merong konting distansya mula sa paaralan pero in terms of protecting our youth I'm not sure if our sponsor would agree with me one hundred meters from the school is like giving them no protection at all because when I go outside the school or maybe I'm inside the school I can see exactly the store I can see that and I know probably that that store would have ehants for sale or cigarettes for sale so hindi po ba Mr. Speaker dapat layuan natin 'yung hundred meters if we're really serious in protecting our youth?
Correct, yes I agree it's visible but that is also the regulation with cigarettes and we also have the Department of Trade and Industry and Consumer Protection but also Mr. Speaker even if the fifteen-year-old sees this ads for example Mr. Speaker in order for them to buy the products they have to present ID there are certain safeguards that we have put in the law and hopefully even more in the IRR kasi pag hindi ka eighteen then you cannot really buy because they will require your ID and if the seller sells then they will be penalized Mr. Speaker so there are certain safeguards actually it's true enough I understand your concern it's a matter of implementation but as legislators as policymakers we cannot really go beyond questioning the capacity of our agencies Mr. Speaker
I believe Mr. Speaker as policymakers the fact that we see it is not working and we we see that one hundred meters is not far enough I believe the best we can do is increase the number of meters and then alam naman unan atin Mr. Speaker may paraan talaga 'yung mga kabataan eh if they want to buy beer they want to buy tobacco they want to buy ehants even if they're minors nakagawa ho sila ng paraan but ituhong pagkakaroon ng mga pagbebenta within hundred meters which is line of sight which is very near will entice them 'yun lang po 'yung sinasabik ko Mr. Speaker it will encourage them because they see it every day when they go to school 'yun po 'yung gusto ko kong idiin Mr. Speaker kaya maganda siguro medyo layuan pa natin 'yung hundred meters and again we can also adjust 'yung hundred meters sa Tobacco Regulation Act with our amendment that we can easily pass within this Congress Mr. Speaker again paneho nababanggit 'yung implementation so I'd like to go back paano nga ho 'yung enforcement pag meron ho nakita sa paaralan mismo nagbebenta so sino ho ang mahuhuli? pag meron po nakitang kabataan na bumibili sa tindahan or nakabili or gumagamit sino ho sino hong lalapit sa kanya? may I know how are we enforcing this?
Mr. Speaker I understand the concern of Congressman Garcia but I don't think the main issue here is proximity it is more of if they have access to the products if I remember correctly when we were drafting this bill going to Glorietta and ICOS has a stand in ICOS in fact I had asking for about the product I had to go through a long stages process because you had to fill up so many information as well as present your ID so if if the implementation is correct as prescribed in this bill then I would not I would not even put the number of meters in as an issue now kung kung 'yung question is about who will enforce it's like any other law that we have but in particular we also have the consumer protection of the Department of Trade and Industry which they have regional offices as well as they have they can assign people in certain areas pero that will they will impose that and we have strict penalties as well that we have imposed para matakot na rin 'yung mga sellers kasi 'yung sellers no excuse 'yan eh kahit sabihin ng seller ay hindi ko alam na di si Ocho palayon they will still be liable and and being a national agency the Department of Trade and Industry based on this law and any other law as a function of our uniform personnel they can also access their services Mr. Speaker
Mr. Speaker again going back to the implementation I do not believe that the DTI even the PNP will be able to enforce this properly without the local governments stepping in to help enforce it I was very much involved Mr. Speaker in our health promotion program in our province in our anti-smoking campaign and it was only when the local government units stepped in to enforce to set up a task force to make sure that these products are not sold near schools to enforce where they should be smoking and where they should not be smoking it was only during that time that the law the ninety-two eleven was at least better implemented that's why my question Mr. Speaker is kahit gustong gusto po ng DTI to implement this properly kahit gusto po ng PNP to implement this properly since it's a national law we do not have enough manpower they don't have a task force who can go around our locality in the whole archipelago in the whole country they won't have the manpower to monitor to make sure that this law is properly implemented and Mr. Speaker dahil nga we have almost one hundred thousand no less than a hundred thousand per year Filipinos who die because of smoking hindi po ba this is enough red flag this is enough alarm that we have to do something especially in the implementation side which we can't because we're the one writing the law we're the one writing the bill to make sure that this is properly implemented now my question Mr. Speaker is kung hindi po talaga kakayanin ng DTI ng PNP fully enforce ito meron po ba tayong provision sa ating panuhala that empowers or mandates our local government units from coming up with adapting this measure and coming up with a ordinance so that they may have the means to implement this properly
Mr. Speaker that is not provided for in the current proposal and but I would assume that goes without saying because as a national law the LGUs can implement it themselves also should they do so there is no law prohibiting them in fact I think they should follow what the national law is but should the good interpreter have any suggestions then we can submit it to the committee for consideration not exactly approval pero consideration lang
Yes, Mr. Speaker I will be proposing that amendment and it's a simple provision to mandate our local government units to come up with an ordinance to implement this law most especially this is a concern this is a public health concern for many of us and especially with COVID Mr. Speaker Madam Sponsor I believe it's important that we come up with provisions that will make sure that this law is built if it becomes a law will be properly implemented so it's a simple mandating our local government units to come up with an ordinance and in fact we've done this in many other laws in many other bills that we've passed Mr. Speaker gusto ko lang idagdag 'yung Tobacco Regulation Act kasi wala po tayong provision mandating them to come up with a local ordinance and if you ask DILG now you ask DOH out of the one thousand six hundred municipalities out of the one hundred fifty-plus cities and more than eighty provinces I believe nasa less than three hundred lang two hundred plus local government units ang meron pong ordinance tungkol sa Tobacco Regulation Act so it shows us that if you don't put it in the law they might not make this a priority and they might not be able to help implement it properly and since we're talking about the youth malinaw na malinaw po na meron itong youth initiation malinaw po to na this is a harmful product especially for those who are not smoking we don't want any Filipino to be to use this product especially if they're not smoking kinakailangan po talaga Mr. Speaker na meron tayong provision pagdating sa proper implementation and again we can learn from ninety-two eleven on we have so many lessons of ninety-two eleven and we can use that to make sure that this law becomes effective and will really be for public health Mr. Speaker so would the sponsor agree and hopefully convince our committee to accept especially this amendment on mandating the local government units to come up with a ordinance supporting or adopting this bill?
Mr. Speaker I would venture to say that the safest course for the mandating the LGUs for the ordinance would be through DILG should DILG adopt a certain process then they can send a memo to all LGUs to issue a certain ordinance no but the law itself with due respect also to the autonomy of our local government units it has not been mentioned here but that does not stop them from making their own restrictions although they should not go beyond what the law is prescribing Mr. Speaker but yes we will give it due consideration Congressman Garcia and present it to the committee Mr. Speaker
Thank you Madam Sponsor Mr. Speaker I think may nagttext na ho sa akin na my time is up maraming maraming salamat po sa pagkakataon para po magtanong thank you Chair Garin thank you DS West thank you to my good friend and my favorite oh pagdating sa mga joint committee meetings namin noon ang ating presiding officer Deputy Speaker Marco Leta maraming salamat po
Thank you
Jury Leader
Mr. Speaker I move that we recognize Honorable Rosano Rupino B. Biason Long District, Montenlupa for his interpellation
The Honorable Rupi Biason is recognized?
Thank you Mr. Speaker thank you to my colleagues will the distinguished sponsor yield to some questions?
Just a few Mr. Speaker
Thank you, Mr. Speaker if I may proceed this bill actually used to be a pet bill of mine although in the end since I was not satisfied with the version that the committee reported out I've decided to raise these questions in order to be enlightened on some of the points that have been forwarded by the sponsors first question really is what is the spirit behind this particular measure? is it to promote trade or is it to protect the health of our countrymen?
It's basically it would be more on the regulation of the trade Mr. Speaker because this is not a health product it might be and we do believe it is less harmful but there's no health claims on this should there be a good effect on the health public health then that's also one of the motivations also but the main consideration is to regulate a new product entering the country Mr. Speaker
Okay and who made the determination that this is not a health product Mr. Speaker?
You only consider Mr. Speaker a product a health product if there are health claims and the claim not the health claim is it has reduced the harm reduced harm but it does not claim that it does not have any harm for example Mr. Speaker so since it's not there's no health claims then it does not fall under the jurisdiction of the Food and Drug Administration so it is considered as a consumer product and hence a consumer product would fall under the Department of Trade and Industry consistently we have been viewing it as a regulation then
And Mr. Speaker distinguished sponsor I've heard it many times in the committee hearings technical working group and even during this plenary deliberation that vapes or ehants are considered less harmful than cigarette smoking would the distinguished sponsor confirm this?
Yes, Mr. Speaker
If that is the case Mr. Speaker we are saying that it is less harmful as confirmed by the distinguished sponsor but the sponsor is also saying that there are no health claims with regard to vapes then there appears to be a conflict in section three in the definition of terms because in section three in the definition of health claims it says here it refers to a communication to consumers in the product label or marketing which represent explicitly or implicitly that the product presents a lower risk or is less harmful than continued cigarette smoking in other words the bill itself is defining health claims as those claims including claims of being less harmful than cigarette smoking
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker.
So wouldn't there be a conflict now with, with what the distinguished sponsor has just, has just said?
It is, it is, um, alternative to smoking, Mr. Speaker. And by comparison, scientists have, uh, many scientists have said, a claim that it has less dangers as compared to combustible cigarettes. But that is not a health claim. It's a matter of finding of a scientific study. And what the intent of the, of the law is, is to regulate consumption of these products, Mr. Speaker. It is not, uh, it is not being sold so that you can cease smoking, Mr. Speaker, or you can get healthier for whatever reason. Uh, it is just because that the risk is less does not mean that it is a health product, Mr. Speaker. In fact, just simply observing the structure of the market and our tax system, we never impose sin taxes on health products, Mr. Speaker. And we are imposing, uh, sin taxes on e-cigarettes and heated tobacco products and the, the, all the products covered by this bill, Mr. Speaker.
Well, if, Mr. Speaker, it's just that the, the, the sponsor self admitted that, um, vapes are, are claiming to be less harmful than continued cigarette smoking. And the bill itself defines health claims as such, when the, when there is a claim that the product is less harmful. So yun, yun po 'yung sinasabi natin na there's a conflict. And if we, uh, we adhere to the, uh, definition as, as of health, health claims as stated here in, uh, in the section of, uh, giving the definition of terms, then we should really be considering, uh, these, uh, ends and the HTPs as having health claims. That's according to the definition and the admission of the sponsor self.
With all due respect to Congressman Biasson, um, any reference to health claims, uh, in the current proposal, uh, subsequently, we are proposing of deleting that, Mr. Speaker.
So does that mean, Mr. Speaker, that, uh, this particular provision on health claims would be deleted?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker.
Or the claim that, uh, HTP and ends, uh, are less harmful, will that be deleted?
We are proposing amendments later, Mr. Speaker, uh, on the provision, on the definition of health claims because it is actually not used anywhere in the bill, Mr. Speaker.
All right, so, um, although this was passed by the committee, after all the technical working group hearings, we now decide that, uh, health claims should not be made a part of this law to define what health claims are. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
I'm not sure if I heard the question correctly, Mr. Speaker, but, uh, it is, uh, we are deleting kasi nga hindi nga relevant sa bill ang definition ng health claims kasi it's never being used in the bill itself. Hence, it follows that, uh, this are not health products, Mr. Speaker.
Um, yes, Mr. Speaker, nga ang klar, may naklarify ko, naaalisin natin 'yung definition ng health claims. Um, therefore, um, pagka binasa itong batas na ito, hindi na maiinterpret na, na may health claim 'yung mga vapes, kasi sinasabi natin less harmful. But in the definition here, pag sinabing health claims, eh, meron claim of less harmful. So para lang hindi na manegate 'yung claim ng less harmful and it becomes, uh, uh, health-related device, aalisin na natin 'yung definition ng health claims. Tama po ba yon, Mr. Speaker?
Well, basically, by eliminating or deleting the provision, Mr. Speaker, it mandates or orders the manufacturers not to use health claims in their products.
Okay. Um, it says in the Declaration of Policy, moving on, Mr. Speaker, in the Declaration of Policy, um, the first paragraph, uh, clearly states, uh, the policy of the state to protect and promote the right of health of the people and instill health consciousness among them. So thi- this gives us a, uh, a sense that the, the purpose of the bill or the spirit of the bill is supposed to be about health. And that was why I asked my first question, uh, what is the spirit of the bill as, as, uh, proposed by the sponsors? So if we are saying now that this is more of a trade regulation, um, where do we reconcile that with the first paragraph of the Declaration of Policy?
Mr. Speaker, the Declaration of Policy says, it's true what Congressman Biasson says, it is the policy of the state to protect and promote the right to health of people and instill health consciousness among them. But next to that, pursuant thereto, the government should regulate manufacture, importation, sale, distribution, use, advertisement, promotion, and sponsorship of, of these products, Mr. Speaker. It is, it is, uh, it is a consequence, uh, na, na health may improve or not improve, depending on who you talk to by using these products. But in order to ensure that there is safe use, if, safe use of these products, then we need to make sure that we regulate each and every stage of, uh, the ends and HTPs, Mr. Speaker.
And wouldn't the sponsor agree that in those, uh, several steps of ensuring the health of people, we should first take into consideration, um, the health aspect, the medical aspect of the product? How it would affect, um, the, the physiological state of the people? Before we even go into, um, the step of considering, uh, the sale, distribution, advertisement, promotion, et cetera. Alamin muna natin kung talagang ang, um, hindi ito detrimental sa kalusugan ng mga tao, bago natin iconsider kung paano ibenta. And if that is the case, shouldn't this be considered a health bill instead of a trade regulation bill?
In the same way, Mr. Speaker, that, uh, cigarettes, for example, we, we have some regulations on, on cigarettes. Since this is an alternative of cigarettes, if we do not regulate, then it is unregulated, Mr. Speaker, because there will be consumption, uh, whether illicit or illicit. So it is, it is high time for us to regulate, to make sure that all the products that come out are safe, Mr. Speaker. Now, uh, there are, there might be conflicting findings as well as opinions. Uh, for example, you know, the World Health Organization in Europe says it reduces users' exposure to numerous toxicants and carcinogens. And, uh, uh, the International Agency for Research also claims that whether, whether the, the veracity of such findings, Mr. Speaker, which I would not personally question, but if some, some people would question that, uh, it still does not contradict the idea that we need to regulate this, Mr. Speaker, whether for consumer or for health purposes, Mr. Speaker.
Well, I perfectly agree, Mr. Speaker, with that statement, that we need to regulate it. Um, that's why we, we initiated this bill. But don't we currently have a regulatory frame, framework already in place? In the form of RA 11467 and EO 106? So, uh, and those two regulatory frameworks that we have right now are obviously more geared towards, uh, the health aspect instead of merely, uh, trade regulation, uh, policy. So it is not entirely, um, accurate to say that there is no regulation right now, Mr. Speaker.
That's true, Mr. Speaker, but with the Committee on Trade and Industry as well as Committee on Health, the members and the committee itself has decided to change some of the policies and regulations so that we can be updated as well as be responsive to the current needs, Mr. Speaker.
So the, the decision of, um, of the committee is to, um, to veer away from the health-directed policy framework that is currently in place and move towards, uh, more of a trade regulation, uh, regime of, of policy. Uh, that, that would how it, that's how it would appear, Mr. Speaker.
Correct, Mr. Speaker.
So we set aside, uh, health as a priority, uh, in the, in the adoption of this policy, is that correct?
Not necessarily, Mr. Speaker. Uh, considering it as a consumer product, does not mean that you do away with the health consequences of the product. Uh, hence, we have included FDA in the formulation of some of the product standards as well as the, uh, regulations in, in trade manufacturing, in the formulation of the IRR. We have also have safeguards in which we have put the regulations on packaging, uh, in, 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 in information dissemination as well as in advertising. Uh, I, I would venture to say that it is not like we disregard the health aspect of this product because any other product, any product, I would say, has a health consequence. Um, so we have been careful, uh, in, in, in drafting the bill, Mr. Speaker, and we think it is, it is, uh, the most responsive and applicable version considering the situation today, Mr. Speaker.
Well, it, it really appears, Mr. Speaker, that health has taken a backseat. Um, because as, as admitted earlier, um, this is veering away from the current policy framework of, uh, having, uh, health as a first, uh, priority consideration. And now this be, this bill being at more of a trade regulation with health on the secondary level, that's why even FDA is, is relegated to a support role to the DTI. Because it's clearly coming out that it is really, the intention is, this bill is a trade regulation bill. Uh, although we invoke, uh, the principles of health in the Declaration of Policy, it turns out it is just a secondary priority in this bill. If I may go to the third paragraph of the Declaration of Policy, it says that the, 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 the policy of the state is to consider harm reduction measures as a public health strategy by ensuring that non-combustible alternatives to cigarettes are properly regulated. Now, may we know, um, sino po ba 'yung nagcraft nitong public health strategy na ito?
The committee, Mr. Speaker. Who drafted?
Well, may, may we know, um, now what was the discussion that was, um, undertaken to arrive at a public health strategy? And who were the key persons involved in making that, those decisions about the strategy? Because we're, we're not talking about a, a, a bigger plan for the country. And, uh, I, I don't know if the committee has the, I don't know if the committee has the, the competence really to adopt a public health strategy for the country without inputs coming from, uh, health authorities, from the experts in the field.
Sir Speaker, this bill has been passed by the committee, both by the trade and health. And I would, I would, uh, give due respect to the decision of the collegial bodies that have been involved. And knowing that the procedures of the House mandates consultations among agencies as well as stakeholders, then I would, I would, uh, say that whatever version has been resulted here, whether this paragraph or the entire, entire bill is a decision of the committee and the committee members, Mr. Speaker.
In short, Mr. Speaker, sinasabi natin na iwanan natin sa members of the committee to adopt public health strategy.
No, I don't think, I, I, it would be an insult to the Committee of Health and Trade to say that they did not do their consultation and research, Mr. Speaker. So that is already a given, should, uh, since the bill is already here presented in the plenary, Mr. Speaker.
Well, for example, Mr. Speaker, in the, the technical working groups and, uh, and hearings, um, authorities from the Department of Health were raising points that, uh, ran counter to what the, the bill was proposing. Like, for example, um, with regard to, um, determining, uh, uh, which devices or which products are of, uh, health concern, um, isn't it that the FDA during that time, uh, when, uh, upon questioning, uh, in relation to, uh, their mother charter, Republic Act 9711, um, in the definition of health-related device, which says, um, any me, any mean, any device not used in healthcare but has been determined by the FDA to adversely affect the health of the people. When FDA was asked in the, in the hearings if they deemed or, uh, if they determined, uh, that, uh, vapes and HTPs um, adversely affect the health of people, they said yes. So we just, uh, we just disregarded the statement of a health authority given, uh, given a mandate under a Republic Act to make that determination. Um, and we disregarded it. So how can we say that, uh, the public health strategy that is presented in this bill had the sufficient inputs of health authorities?
That's true, Mr. Speaker, uh, but let us consider and give due respect to each and every member as well as the committee that their decisions are, are their decisions and they have been mandated by their own constituents to represent their constituents here. How they decide, uh, is a matter of privilege for each and every member of this House. And I would assure the, the good interpreter that there was no lack of resource speakers, no research, no reference documents. Uh, I think there was even an oversupply of such things during the deliberations, Mr. Speaker. And I do believe that it is not unusual for a committee to draft a bill in accordance to what they want whether, regardless of the fact, whether they are for or against the opinion of an agency, Mr. Speaker. That is the right of each and every member of this House, Mr. Speaker. And I would not venture to question their capacity and how they decided to vote in a certain manner, Mr. Speaker.
Well, um, being a member of the House, of course, uh, it would be difficult for me to, um, go against the argument of the sponsor. It's just that I would really point out that an authority vested, with a vested authority by law, uh, spoke their position on the matter. Anyway, we just go to the next point, um. Would you agree that an ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of cure? It's a, it's an age, uh, age-old, uh, saying with regard to, uh, healthcare.
May, may apologies, Kong Biasson. Can you repeat the question, please?
Would you agree that, uh, an ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of cure? Yun, medyo matagal lang kasabihan yun sa larangan ng kalusugan.
Matanda na ako, hindi ko marinig ng maayos. Would I agree?
How about this, how about this, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker? Would you agree that, uh, an ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of cure? Lumang kasabihan na po yun tungkol sa kalusugan.
Would I agree that an ounce of prevention?
Is worth more than a pound of cure?
Is better than, more sound than a cure? Correct.
An ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of cure?
That's correct, like COVID, Mr. Speaker. My apologies, Mr. Speaker.
Correct, yeah, correct. Uh, yeah, in, in, in any health issue, it's really, uh, uh, better to prevent, um, uh, than, than just find a cure, you know, um. So having said that, um, are we, uh, putting into, um, um, are we putting into jeopardy, um, the, the government's direction or the healthcare, health sector's, um, direction that, um, we should encourage the stop, the stop of the use of cigarettes or even vapes? So dapat ba dati nating ginagawa eh, mas inie-encourage ang paghinto ng smoking rather than, uh, uh, promoting 'yung less harmful?
Mr. Speaker, the current Mr. Speaker, the current people that stop smoking in the Philippines every year is only point, I think, 0.4% of the 16 million that consumes. So, it is quite low. It's a steady number, the 16 million every year, because we have people that stop smoking, but we also have people that start smoking. More concerning would be if minors would start smoking, Mr. Speaker. Or non... So, in that sense, Mr. Speaker, we, I understand that the premise of the question is that baka pag nagvape na siya, or nag-e-cigarettes na siya, then they will become smokers of combustible cigarettes. Studies show, though, that this is not the case, though. It is, most of the consumers of this product don't become smokers of traditional cigarettes. It is, although it is high time that we regulate it to make sure that they don't even start with this at a young age. I would not say na hindi to attractive sa children, because marketing can go in a one way na maging attractive sa mga minors. So that is why we need regulation para ma-kontrol 'yung mga, lalo na 'yung mga bata that are thinking of smoking, that not to allow them at all to buy or consume these products. So, I think there are safeguards. I think even more stringent than the safeguards that are in place on tobacco in some ways. Kasi mas specific at, mas updated na tong bill na to kesa sa batas regulating the traditional tobacco. So, I think I would, I'm comfortable to say na this will not be a cause for increase in prevalence in smoking in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
Well, it's good that the distinguished sponsor spoke about protecting the youth with regard to cigarettes and even vapes. It's just that this bill appears to reverse, as mentioned by our distinguished colleague earlier, it appears to reverse the policy already set in place by the president and even by an act of Congress under EO 106 and 11467 with regard to the age. So, how would you characterize the step that is being taken by this particular bill compared to those two policy issuances that I referred to? Is it a progression or is it a regression of policy? Because in 11467, we already set the minimum age at 21, and in this bill, it's going back to 18. If you're saying that we want to protect our children, how come we are putting in more of the youth, giving them access to these products?
Yes, it might seem regressive, but I think it is very progressive in a sense that we have the regulations in place and also we have to consider that cigarettes are allowed when they're 18 years old. So, if you put in the law that we only allow 21-years-old, higher than the regular cigarettes, our reason behind for putting it at 18 is that to have the same regulations in terms of age as regular cigarettes, because you're giving them an impression na rin that if only when I'm 18, I can buy e-cigarettes, then that means that e-cigarettes is more dangerous. That's one of the reasons, Mr. Speaker. But, yes, indeed, there are other issuances and laws that impose a 21-year-old limitation, pero that does not stop Congress from revisiting the law and making new regulations, Mr. Speaker. And the committee has decided on the 18-years-old, Mr. Speaker.
Yep, well, yun nga, magconflict lang dun sa sinasabi natin na we want to protect the youth, and yet what we did was to make a backward step. Because 11467 was already an improvement. It was seen by public health advocates as a victory or an improvement over the policy that was existing under RA 9211. Ano nga eh, pa'kumbaga, public health advocates are looking at 9211 already as a flawed law. And 11467 was already seen as an improvement. Pero with this bill, binabalik lang natin doon sa same status as 9211 had. Although we say na, kasi para magpantay dahil 'yung messaging, parang it would give a distorted messaging with regard to smoking cigarettes versus smoking vapes. But I think if we partner it with a message that we are going to amend 9211 as well, then I think that it won't send mixed signals. It would make it clear that we are indeed pushing for the health of our countrymen as stated in the policy declaration of the bill, and we are protecting the youth, as the sponsors have said. So, yun lang ang parang hindi masyadong nagtutugma dahil paatras 'yung, obviously, paatras 'yung ginawa natin from the gains of 11467, nagpaatras tayo na hakbang by allowing more of the youth to have access. So, would the sponsor agree to that? That it's a backward step?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Despite the previous laws and issuances of the government, the committee has decided to revert, to put the minimum age at 18-years-old. Because basically, 18 is the age of emancipation. You can vote, you can even drink, which is not healthy. You can smoke regular cigarettes and many other things that you can do, enter into a contract when you're 18. But does that mean that e-cigarettes is... We want to relay the message that if... No, that what we want is to level the requirements, eh, at least of that of traditional cigarettes to HTPs. But also, Mr. Speaker, this is also to avoid any illicit trade. Kasi pag gusto talaga ng mga bata, 18-years-old, he really wants to purchase this, then they can. But at least if we widen the age for three years, then we can be assured that this 18-years-old and above are purchasing HTPs that are regulated, that follow the standards of the DTI. And in fact, this is the same norm as any other, many of the other countries do. Mr. Speaker, if you, with your kind indulgence, I would like to request Congressman Rufus Rodriguez to answer the succeeding questions of Congressman Yason.
We have no problem with that, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Rodriguez is recognized substitute for the Honorable Sharon Garin.
We are ready, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we are ready for the interpolation.
Mr. Speaker, I just have been unmuted. So, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And of course, good afternoon to my colleague Congressman Yason. Before he would proceed to further questions, let me just state that Republic Act 11467 is a tax measure, Mr. Speaker, and that tax measure includes regulatory provisions which is unconstitutional. Because we are talking of a tax measure. And here goes, there comes an insertion on the part of the Senate to be able to include in the BICAM this regulation including the 21-years of age. It is not even germane to the title of the bill. So, Mr. Chairman, if he will bank, if the Honorable Ruffi will bank on the fact that 1146 has amended the previous law, this is unconstitutional, and that is why we are now going to the real regulatory provision, regulatory measure that will make sure that everything is considered. There is not even consideration of these regulatory measures in the lower house when that House bill was approved and then went to the BICAM. So maybe, you know, I hope that Congressman Yason realizes the constitutional issues on 1146. Nobody has questioned it, because precisely, we were already in the process of having our regulatory law, which is the House bill that we have now, House Bill 9007, Mr. Chairman. So, that is my answer to the insistence that 11467 has provisions about age and others, and we should be able to maintain that. It was never discussed in the plenary in the House of all this regulatory, because these are, Mr. Speaker, these are, it is supposed to be in a different law which concerns on the regulations of nicotine, non-nicotine delivery systems and heated tobacco products. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Congressman Yason.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I appreciate the input of the Honorable Rodriguez. Me not being a lawyer, I appreciate it very much. But may I ask the distinguished sponsor, is the law invalid as of now?
No, it is never invalid, because nobody has questioned it. But I will tell you that in the area of consideration of when you refer to a law which is a tax measure, having regulatory provisions, that is extraneous to the law. But I agree, it is not, it has not been declared a constitutional, so it is there and under the operative fact doctrine, that is there. And that is why we have 9006 to correct and really have like this one, a discussion, Mr. Speaker. A very good discussion in the TWG, in the committees. Now, we are in the plenary, and we really have this process, which will really enlighten everyone. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Speaker, if the law is valid, then I would not be out of order in referring to it. And even with the discussion of this bill in the House of Representatives now, it still has to pass through the whole legislative process. Unless somebody questions this in the Supreme Court, I would hold 11467 as valid.
Yes, I have never stated that the Honorable Gentleman, he's always in real order. Ruffi has never been in out of order. So, that is not my statement. My statement is that, considering that this particular bill, a particular law, 11467, put extraneous matter, it is my opinion that it is unconstitutional now. There has been no case filed, and so it stays, and that is the operative fact doctrine. And so, it is never my intention to question that it is that the Honorable Yason is out of order. He's never out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But then, setting that discussion aside, the point really is, the passage of that law, and even the issuance by the President of an executive order, points to the fact that the direction of policy of government is to increase the age, the minimum age, as an improvement to RA 9211. So, that point still remains, that this bill is moving a step backward in relation to current policy, especially with regard to protecting the youth.
Mr. Speaker, in answer to that, the President do not make policy. The President executes, Mr. Speaker. And it is Congress that makes policy. And since Congress did not really contribute to 11467 as far as regulation of nicotine products, electronic delivery of nicotine products, then that is why we are now here, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, Mr. Speaker. We are here to have that regulatory framework, to be able to have once and for all regulation that will be able not only to make sure that our new delivery systems, which is less harmful, will be regulated, but to make sure that this will be what will guide us in the coming years. And this is now the policy of the Congress. From here, it will go to the Senate, and we will hear from the Senate. So full discussions, and that is why it is Congress that will make the policy and the framework for governance of this delivery of electronic nicotine products.
Mr. Speaker, there seems to be a claim that it's only the Senate which had a part in RA 11467. But didn't this bill pass through a BICAM conference committee with representatives from the House of Representatives present? And that committee made that determination that the law was sound as it has been passed into RA 11467. Because if we are saying, as the previous sponsor is saying, that it is the wisdom of the committee to make such decisions, then shouldn't we also accept the fact that the members of the House of Representatives who were present in the BICAM conference committee of RA 11467 saw wisdom in the passage of that bill as it is now, as it is in its present form, particularly with regard to the age limit that was prescribed? So, we are going a step back.
Mr. Speaker, the BICAM is a different body from the House of Representatives. It is a third body. In other words, we have the House, we have the Senate, and there's the third body. Now, it's a fact that in the House, because I have been in that, I was always present in the hearing for the taxes, the tax provision and the tax measure, there was no discussion on that here. It went to the BICAM. And in the BICAM, well, in the BICAM, there is always discussions from the Senate and from the House. As I understand, because I was not there, this came from the Senate. That is what it is. So therefore, there is really no true discussions of this rider in the committees, in the House of Representatives, the actual committees like Health and Trade Industry, and also the Ways and Means. And that is why, what I'm saying is that now, that is under the water, under the bridge, but what we are doing now is coming out with this complete comprehensive regulatory bill, which should be the one that will become, you know, that will amend all the other pronouncements of the executive and all other laws, because this will be the new law, the complete law on regulation, Mr. Speaker.
And if this bill, Mr. Speaker, passes into law, we would have taken a step backward in terms of prescribing the minimum age. And that is the point that we are raising. Because science has already told us that physiological development of a human being goes on all the way to the age of 25. And if we open up our youth at the age of 18 to products such as this, although some will claim that there is still no, there is no study that would prove that it is detrimental to the health of the young, cigarettes started that way, on a side note. It's still a fact that 18-years-old leaves a lot of possible threats to the health of a developing child. So why are we making a step backward from something that has already been accepted by science as a necessary policy change that we should do? There may be that technicality of being a rider provision, but the principle of raising the minimum age is still sound, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished interpreter, we are saying that this regulatory framework should not be, should not be more onerous and more discriminatory than... onerous and more discriminatory than cigarettes. That is what we're saying. For cigarettes, eighteen years old can have cigarettes. There's no prohibition. So there will, there will be Mister Speaker, unequal protection of the laws. Eighteen years old can buy uh, uh, cigarettes. Then only twenty-one years old can be able to purchase these e-cigarettes. So in other words Mister, Mister Speaker, we are saying that at least let us be at par on what we have. Eighteen is the age of majority. If therefore you are decided to, on the age of eighteen, to smoke, well, nobody can stop you on that. That is why we need information all over from our schools and everywhere and all organizations to be able to inculcate the fact that cigarette smoking is really harmful to health. And that is why, why will we have eighteen years old for cigarettes? And then for e-cigarettes, it is twenty-one. Uh, we don't see any rhyme or reason. That's why this rider in the law, which was questioned also by members of the house, but the senate prevailed, th- this is the situation that we have now. So we are saying that based on our study, less harmful uh, this delivery of electronic delivery. Now therefore, commensurate to that, then at least we are able to make it at the same level, at the same age. But we're saying that let us always have of course, uh, the, all, all the information drive and that we can have of, of on this particular bill when it becomes law, Mister Speaker.
Well, yeah, Mister Speaker, we fully agree with equal protection under the law. That's why we are also espousing that uh, along with setting a, a higher age for vapes to match with the eleven four six seven, we should also make moves, initiatives to amend RA ninety-two eleven to um, make it equal to what we are going to pass uh, right now. Because we are, we are more concerned about the impact on the health of the youth, which I think is, is the primordial concern as stated in the declaration of policy of, of this bill and as stated by the, by the sponsors, that we want to protect the youth. So it really is a contradiction in my mind. Why we are going, we are lowering um, the age requirement for minimum purchase of, or minimum age to purchase these products. But let me move on Mister Speaker to uh, another point. Now with regard to online marketing. Um, as we know, online, the, going online is almost free to, to everyone. Um, a lot of the, a lot of our youth have full access online and uh, selling these products online would give them that, they give the possibility of um, um, those below the age requirement to have access to these products. How are we going to ensure that this does not happen?
Thank you Mister Speaker. Well, why do we allow sale or distribution of HTPs and vaping products online? Mister Speaker, there is data that confirms that Philippine e-commerce is growing and is showing no signs of slowing down. A growing number of Filipinos do their shopping online and have products delivered at their doorstep in keeping with this trend in Philippine e-commerce. I believe that in this particular case, online trade of ends and ends and VHTPs should indeed be allowed. Because Mister Speaker, we always, we have always in that hearing, we have already determined as a committee and technical working group, that's, that, that the uh, e-cigarettes is less harmful than the cigarettes themselves. So we cannot simply discount valid considerations of ease convenience that dictate consumer behavior. There is no reason to make these products which are better. Products which are better alternatives to continued smoking, readily accessible likewise to the intended consumers who are those smokers who want now to go to uh, e-cigarettes. So Mister Chairman, this discussion that we have, Mister Speaker, leads to a danger of having access by minors via online trade. But precisely, we are saying that this can be very much regulated. We have regulation Mister Chairman on e-commerce, we have regulation of uh, uh, fake products, we have, we have uh, regulation on harmful products on the, on the internet. And so we will have this likewise, uh, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, during the technical working group hearings, uh, there were IT experts there, experts on online commerce. And they were asked, um, is there a way to ensure or for us to enforce a provision that would regulate the access of minors through in, through e-commerce or online stores? And they said there is none, that they cannot guarantee, that cannot be guaranteed that no minor will be able to access. And uh, there is no way to ensure. So it might, it might look good on paper to put it in, in this uh, in this bill that there is a minimum age requirement. But if we open, open it up to online sales and marketing, the IT experts themselves said so, that there is no guarantee that you can enforce that. So the best way really is to not allow it. So why are we again, uh, opening up the possibility for minors to access these products? While we say that we should protect the youth, we are, we are leaving um, a loophole for, for them to be able to access these products. And it's the experts themselves, just like what I pointed out earlier, that health experts themselves have said that this should be a um, a, a, a health uh, issue. But we turned it into a trade and regulation issue. Now, we heard experts say that they cannot uh, control or cannot ensure that this provision can be enforced. So why are we opening up our youth to that possibility?
Uh Mister Speaker, online marketing is allowed for delivery of cigarettes. So that is clear. Online marketing is allowed for cigarettes. Here what is important Mister Speaker is that at the point of delivery, there is a checking of a government issued ID. In other words, there can be in this regulation, because after this bill is approved, there will be uh, IRRs, there will be uh, implementing rules and regulation. And meaning that in this IRRs, there are possibility, there are safeguards that can be implemented in the IRR that will assure that minors will not be reached by these products. Just as for example, in cigarettes, they are allowed online to be purchased. Here, we allow them online, but there will be safeguards to make sure that minors will not have that. And one of them is to be able to have a, at the point of delivery, be able to make sure that those buying these products are really eighteen years of age and that can be through government ID. If there can be no uh, there's no identification and the proper age identification, then there may be no sale at the point of delivery. So these are things Mister Chairman, Mister Speaker, that we can really place in the IRRs to assure that this will be, this will be uh, properly be the minors are properly protected. And once again, uh, we are saying is that uh, if uh, if uh, there is, if uh, there will be, if these smokers, we are now talking smokers, cannot buy these products, then, then Mister Speaker, they just go back to smoking instead of having the e-cigarettes which is less harmful, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, um, of course, we can put all those kinds of um, theoretical safeguards on paper. But as I had pointed out, it was the experts themselves, the IT experts themselves who said you cannot really guarantee enforcement of what we will put. It's a, it's a technical matter. It's not really about the legal matter that we will be putting into the law. It's the capability of, technical capability of um, ensuring that it is enforced. So the, the best way really to ensure that the, um, the, the youth do not get access through online selling is to prevent it. Um, if we, we say that cigarettes are sold online, then that's also prevent it. Because really protecting the youth, uh, we should be, we should be able to cut off all the access. And this uh, provision here does not do that. It, it gives a loophole that would open our youth to the dangers of um, these kinds of products. It is harmed, harmed, less harmful, but it's nevertheless, it's harmful.
Mister Speaker, well, we have different views on this and I am saying that the regulatory, uh, the, the IRR, Mister Speaker, will be able to address these problems. But the point is, we cannot discriminate against those selling uh, these products uh, to those who'd like to shift from smoking to uh, smoking cigarettes to using these electronic delivery systems. So that is my view and I have a contrary view with uh, our very well-respected Congressman Ruffi Biazon.
Well, if, if we can move on now to um, section eleven on uh, product communication restrictions. Uh, because of course, we're trying not to entice, uh, especially the youth, uh, to go into these products. There is just this um, statement here, um, on section eleven. These, the, the advertisement shall be allowed in retailer establishments through direct marketing and on the internet. These shall not be aimed at, aimed at or particularly appealed to persons under eighteen years of age. These should not undermine quit smoking messages and should not encourage non-tobacco and non-nicotine users to use ends and HTPs. Um, if the sponsors can just explain this provision. Um, how does one advertise and promote or market uh, vapes, ends, HTPs without uh, undermining quit smoking messages and not encourage uh, non-tobacco and non-nicotine users to use ends? Kasi ganito yun, nagbebenta tayo ng produkong ito. We will say all the flowery words para maibenta siya. Pero sinasabi natin, it should not undermine quit smoking messages and should not encourage non-tobacco and non-nicotine users to use ends. How, how is that done? How, how does the, how do the sponsors envision um, this particular provision um, to be implemented or enforced?
Uh Mister Speaker, we, we should remember that one important government objective is to switch millions of Filipino smokers who cannot quit smoking to better alternatives that poses less risk of harm to health like e-cigarettes and heated tobacco products. And so therefore, what we are doing here is that uh, well, we are, the lawmakers should make sure that uh, we will provide these regulatory provisions of law on how uh, e-cigarettes can be sold in the market. In the European Union, the, the EU TPD is also following a notification approach and not a pre-market approval. So in the question of how we are going to have this, it is a matter of information Mister Speaker. Information about these products, information about the, the dangers of smoking and how uh, e-cigarettes will be less harmful and you can quit smoking and go to a less harmful use of these e-cigarettes, Mister Speaker.
Uh Mister Speaker, um, the fact that this provision was in, included in this bill that has been reported out, um, I think there should have been an, an idea of how it could be implemented, no? Like for example nga, this particular portion where it says you should not encourage non-tobacco, non-nicotine users to use ends. Pero we're trying to sell ends. So how can that, how can we reconcile that? What, what kind of copyright will be done by advertisers, marketers, um, to sell their product, but at the same time not encourage people to use it?
Well Mister Speaker, this law does not encourage uh, the uh, to, to people to be able to uh, continue smoking and even having this. What we're saying is that there will be, there is that those who wish to be able to go into less harmful uh, uh, products may be able to get it. And that is why what we're saying is that uh, we are trying our best that those smokers will be able to quit smoking and go into e-cigarettes. At the same time, this will not be within reach of minors. So that's what we're saying now. But that is why also in the implementing rules and regulations, there can be uh, particular acts and regulations that will be able to implement the provisions stated by the Honorable Ruffi Biazon.
Uh Mister Speaker, um, I, I would, I would tend to concede that there is some um, measure of implementability to this provision if it does not include advertising on the internet. Because in the first sentence, it says advertisements shall not be, shall, shall be allowed to retailer, in retailer, retailer establishments, like for example vape shops. Okay, they can put their advertisements there or through direct marketing. If you know that there is somebody who's trying to quit, you sell, you, you send advertising and marketing materials. But if you put it on the internet, that's open to everyone. And I would go back to my earlier argument that the internet cannot protect all the youth. But here, we will, we will be putting out advertisements. Uh, even if we say it on paper that this advertisement should not undermine quit smoking messages or should not encourage non-tobacco, non-nicotine users to use ends. The fact that you're selling the product, you can only message it in such a way that it will attract people to that product. Even non-nicotine and non-tobacco users, if you put it out on the internet. So what I'm saying here is that uh, it's, it's not going to be a really, real implementable provision. It just gives us a good feeling that we put something on paper that is, that would protect um, non-tobacco, non-nicotine users. But actually in real life, when this happens, it's out on the internet, it's everyone's access. So again, uh, we would be including in the target those uh, the, the youth of, of, of this country.
Uh Mister Speaker, in advertising health warnings, the, in advertising these products, the e-cigarettes, health warnings are always included in the advertisement. So that is already a warning. It's there. Also, the message uh, is that there will not be, this will not be for minors. So there will be no cartoons or use of celebrities, influencers. Our advertisements are only limited to adult, adult websites. So therefore, there are still, there will be of course regulations and that can be done. I, IT experts, I, I, I understand them. But there we have, there will be a way to be able to have these safeguards in the advertisement and the delivery of these products, Mister Speaker.
Uh, well Mister Speaker, that, just to reiterate that or to stress on that, putting out, putting it out on the internet will not really guarantee us um, um, security of our youth from accessing these products. It would really be um, uh, something that is a loophole. Um, but anyway Mister Chairman, uh Mister Speaker, I have other questions, but I've also been advised that I've exceeded my limit. Uh, I thank the sponsors for bearing with me for my questions uh, in this interpolation. Uh, we do hope that the, the final outcome of this bill will uh, put more premium on the health of our people and most especially uh, the youth of this land. Uh, thank you very much Mister, Mister Speaker and uh, to the sponsors, um, my appreciation for your patience. Thank you very much.
Thank you also to Congressman Biazon. Thank you for the, these questions. It will, it has clarified many, many, uh, many provisions and uh, uh, the uh, the statements uh, regarding uh, our House Bill nine zero zero six. So thank you very much Mister Speaker. Thank you, uh, Congressman Biazon.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate this sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
With no objection, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendment.
There any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, there being no wishes to introduce, uh, introduce a committee amendments. I move that we close the uh, period of committee amendments.
There being no objection, the motion is approved. Committee amendments, there is no committee amendments?
Mister Speaker, may be, may I be acknowledged? Uh, sorry.
Are we proceeding to individual amendments already?
Yes, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I move that we open the uh, period of individual amendments. Yes, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the pe- uh, period of individual amendments.
Is there a motion to close the co- amendments of the committee?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There being no objection, the amendment, the committee amendments is, uh, closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open, uh, the period of, uh, individual amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none, the individual, uh, amendments is open.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize, uh, Honorable Wes Gachalian, First District, Balenzuela, for his individual amendment.
The Honorable, uh, Diaz Westgatalian is recognized for his individual amendments.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Pasensya na po excited that, uh, gusto ko na pong kumain. Uh, the following are the proposed, uh, amendments to House Bill 9007 if this would be acceptable to our honorable sponsor. Uh, first, on page three, lines twenty-six to twenty-seven, and page four, lines one and two, delete the definition of health claims.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
There being no objection, the amendment is approved.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to our honorable sponsor. Next is on page four, line four, delete the word "maybe" and insert the word "are."
What does this sponsor say?
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say, Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
There being no objection, the amendment is approved.
On page five, under letter, uh, letter "R," or the definition of promotion in line ten, after the phrase "non-HTP products", insert the phrase quote-unquote "at such events" or to otherwise promote the sale or use of the products.
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Any objection? There being none, the proposed amendment is accepted and approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On page six, line twenty, delete the word "all" until the word "act" on page eight, line four.
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
No objection? There being none, the amendment is approved.
On page six, line twenty, after the word quote-unquote "warnings", insert the following. Section four, packaging and health warnings. All manufacturers, importers, and distributors duly authorized to sell ends and E N N D S, refills, and HTP consumables shall comply with the following packaging requirements. Letter A, the unit packaging or any outside packaging of ends, refills, or HTP consumables shall bear the prescribed textual warning that shall be printed on thirty percent of the bottom portion of the principal display surface of the product and shall occupy thirty percent of the front and thirty percent of the back panel of the packaging. The text of the warning shall appear in clearly legible type in black text on a white background with a black border and in contrast by typography, layout, or color to the other printed materials on the package. The health warning shall occupy a total area of less than fifty percent of the total warning frame. Letter B, the internal revenue fiscal marking requirements under Republic Act Number 8424 or the National Internal Revenue Code as amended and other related regulations whenever applicable shall be complied with.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say on the proposed amendment?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Are there objections? There being none, the proposed amendment is approved.
On page sixteen, line seven, under Section seventeen D, on product standard requirements of HTPs, after the phrase quote-unquote "added to", insert the phrase quote-unquote "the tob- tobacco mixture in". Uh, still on page sixteen, line nine, after the word additives, insert comma "other than tobacco."
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none, the proposed amendment is approved.
On page six, paragraph Y, add a new definition under paragraph Z on line twenty. Add, uh, quote-unquote "and novell tobacco products" after every mention of ends and ends and HTPs. Uh, section three, definition of terms. Novell tobacco products refers to all substances, devices, and innovations either made partly of tobacco leaf as raw material or containing nicotine from tobacco already existing or to be developed in the future, intended to be used as substitute for cigarettes, conventional tobacco products, ends, or HTPs.
Ac- accept, Mr. Speaker.
Does the House agree?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none, the proposed amendment is approved.
On page nine, add the new paragraph to start on line five to read as follows. Section eight, online trade, provide, uh, new paragraph, parentheses, provided further that the sale or distribution of vaporized nicotine products through internet websites or via e-commerce and/or other similar media shall only be made by online sellers or distributors registered with the DTI or SEC and the products being sold and advertised online shall be compliant with the health warnings requirements indicated herein as well as the BIR prescribed tax stamp or other fiscal marks. The Secretary of, uh, Trade and Industry upon due notice and hearing shall have the power to issue an order directing that a non-compliant website, pay webpage, online application, social media account, or other similar platform be taken down.
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Are there objections? There being none, the proposed amendment is approved.
On page nine, after the provisions on online trade, add a new section nine to read as follows. Section nine, floor price. The Bureau of Internal Revenues is mandated to issue a revenue regulation prescribing the floor price or the minimum price of vaporized nicotine and other non-combustible nicotine products taking into account the sum of their excise tax, value-added tax, and a reasonable production cost.
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept the amendments.
Are there any objections? There being none, all the amendments proposed are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure, Mr. Majority Leader?
That's it. What?
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, we still have two, two amendments.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On page thirteen, line seven, delete quote-unquote "in consultation with the..." Apologies, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the section I was referring to was in, uh, supposedly in section twenty, uh, which is a new section that will be added, uh, to the bill entitled "Role of Local Government Units", uh, in which the cities and municipalities shall adopt ordinances consistent with this act to assist the relevant national government agencies in the effective implementation of the provisions thereof, including the apprehension of violators and the institution of criminal proceedings.
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say, Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill 9007.
Any objection?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none, measure is suspended. Consideration. Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, in order that we can approve the amendment of the Honorable Gachalian, I move that we open again consideration of House Bill 9007 as found in Committee Report 873, and could the Secretary-General be directed to read the title of the measure. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary-General is so directed to read again the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 9007, an Act Regulating the Manufacturer, Use, Sale, Packaging, Distribution, Advertisement, and Promotion of Electronic Nicotine and Non-Nicotine Delivery Systems and Heated Tobacco Products.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, our parliamentary status regarding House Bill 9007 is that we are in the period of individual amendments. Previously, the Honorable Gachalian proposed an amendment, but it was, uh, not yet approved by plenary. So I move to recognize the Honorable Gachalian so that he can restate his amendment for approval by the committee and plenary. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Gachalian is recognized.
Apologies, Mr. Speaker, on the miscommunication, but, uh, this representation would like to add a new section under section twenty entitled "The Role of Local Government Units", uh, "The Cities and Municipalities Shall Adopt Ordinances Consistent With This Act to Assist the Relevant National Government Agencies in the Effective Implementation of the Provisions thereof, Including the Apprehension of Violators and the Constitution of Criminal Proceedings." Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendments.
There any objection? There being none, the last proposed amendment is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the amendments of House Bill nine, period of amendments of House Bill 9007.
No objection, the motion is approved. Consideration of 9007 is hereby suspended. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the Additional Reference of Business and request that the Secretary-General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Secretary-General, please read the Additional Reference of Business.
Additional Reference of Business: Verified Impeachment Complaint. Verified Complaint for Impeachment Against Supreme Court Associate Justice Mario Victor F. Leonen, filed by Mr. Edwin M. Cordavilla and endorsed by Representative Angelo Marcos Barba.
To the Committee on Justice. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 8631, entitled "The Not Granting Philippine Citizenship to Benvenido Murejon Maranyon", we have been informed that the Committee on Justice and the Honorable Yeda Marie Romualdes and Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, sponsors and authors of House Bill Number 8631, respectively have no objections to the amendments of the Senate to said House Bill. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 8631.
There's a motion to concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill 8631. All those in favor, say aye. Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. The concurrence of Senate amendments to House Bill Number 8631 is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 165 to Agriculture and Food and Industry and Trade and Industry. House Resolution 1650 to Health. House Resolution 1651 to Energy. House Resolution 1653 to Local Government. House Resolution 1658 to Disaster Resilience. House Resolution 1662 to Labor and Employment. House Resolution 1663 to Housing and Urban Development. House Resolution 1664 to Government Enterprises and Privatization. House Resolution 1666 to Justice. House Resolution 1669 to Youth and Sports Development. House Resolution 1670 to Public Accounts. House Resolution 1672 to Public Order and Safety. House Resolution 1673 to Agriculture and Food. House Resolution 1676 to Labor and Employment. House Resolution 1678 to Agriculture and Food and Trade and Industry. House Resolution 1711 to Good Government and Public Accountability. House Resolution 1751 to Good Government and Public Accountability. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the, uh, House Resolus- Hamilton House Resolutions mentioned to their appropriate, uh, committees. There any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 604958, 3949, 7101, 7169, and 8799 from the Committees on Government Reorganization and Health to the Committee on Health. House Bill Number 1239 from the Committee on Revision of Laws to the Committee on Welfare of Children. House Bill Number 6541 from the Committee on Transportation to the Committees on Energy, Ecology, and Transportation. House Bill Number 6923, 7465, 7633, 7947, and 8760 from the Committees on Revision of Laws and Welfare of Children to the Committee on Revision of Laws. House Bill Number 7205 from the Committees on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and Information and Communications Technology to the Committee on Information and Communications Technology. House Bill Number 7757 from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committees on Government Reorganization and Basic Education and Culture. House Bill Number 8401 from the Committee on Welfare of Children to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. House Bill Number 8401, from the Committee on Welfare of Children to the Committee on Basic Education. House Resolution Number 1366, from the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization to the Special Committee on Senior Citizens and Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to change referrals of the measures mentioned by the Majority Leader from one committee to another. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion to change the referrals of these committees mentioned is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees. Representative Marcoletta to Basic Education and Culture; Representative Gaite to Civil Service and Professional Regulation; Representative Elago to Women and Gender Equality; Representative Lim to Women and Gender Equality; Representative Castro to Public Order and Security; Representative Tan to Health; Representative Elago to Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education; Representative Abante Junior to Public Order and Security; Representative Chato to Ecology; Representative Kulyamat to Public Order and Security; and Representative Legarda to Women and Gender Equality. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to refer the following cited speeches to certain committees referred to. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session till tomorrow, May 19, at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Motion is suspended until tomorrow, at three o'clock in the afternoon. May 19, 2021.
Diaz Rupus, good night, my dear Deputy Speaker from Mindanao. Kaloy, Kaloy. Happy birthday, my dear Kaloy. Thank you, Diaz Rupus.
I conkaloy belated happy birthday.
Thank you, Gonkara.
Hi, Diaz Rupus.
Yes, we've been showing it, evening continuing.